Seeing that the appointed time has arrived and that we have quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, December 18th, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board 2024. Today is December 18th, 2024. The time is 6:30. We're meeting at the Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. We're being live broadcast on the town's website at www.mashpema.gov backslash channel hyphen 18. Also, live broadcast on channels eight and 1072. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to invite everybody to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is review and approval of meeting minutes from November 20th. Okay. I'm looking.
December 4th?
I got three seconds.
Okay, so we'll have to table that matter because it has the wrong date.
What's this one like that?
Right, but on the agenda, it's, it's, we should have.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Rob. So, okay, so what, what, what are the dates that we have queued up to be approved?
December 4th, October 16th, Executive Session.
Okay, so we'll table that matter and on the next agenda, I will have the correct dates. Okay, so thanks, everybody, for coming early. I'm gonna go over to the podium. So I just wanted to, thanks for coming early. We have a busy night and I wanted to go over a really neat tool on the Cape Cod Commission website. There's a traffic safety study that's being done by the Cape Cod Commission right now. It's through the Vision Zero Movement. So that started over, I think, in Switzerland and it was, their vision was that there would be zero fatalities in traffic. And that would be drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians, et cetera, scooters, I guess. So it has come, the movement has grown, the federal government had some funding and has future funding to fund our action plan. But in order to have an action plan, the Cape Cod Commission, we had to have an entity take, spearhead this effort. And right now, they're collecting thoughts, people's thoughts, on their traffic, traffic safety, traffic problems in their community. So if you just go to, you know, any search bar and just type in Cape Cod Commission, Vision Zero, and that stands for Zero Traffic Fatalities. See if I can come down. You'll get to their website. Okay, and there's our little guy who's safely bicycling in a bike path, a safe bike path, and there's a pedestrian. He's, I guess, I think he's wearing a helmet, and here we go. So there's an overview of the effort. They did have some public meetings. I've been to two public sessions about this. You, Rob's been to one. There will eventually be a written plan that we'll be able to comment on, but right now, again, they're taking comments from the public. What are some traffic issues that you have, safety issues that you've identified, intersections you've identified? Oh, wait, I gotta show you. There is an advisory committee? Who's the members of? They don't have the members. Oh, look who's there. Colton Atkinson, the bike guy that comes to our meetings, yeah. All right, so let's go back to this. All right, so here's the tool, okay? And it gives you a little welcome and a little bit about what, and look at all those lovely comments, okay? So it's, it's, it's a little, this is why I had this workshop. It's a little strange at first to get used to this tool. Right? So what you do, I'm in the wrong town. Let's get over to where we are. So what you do is you just click on an area. You click on an area and then you say your comments. So, let's see, this comment is, "Remove yield signs for traffic turning right from Great Neck Road North onto Route 130 East." "There is a crosswalk here and a yield with a low radius turn encompassing, encouraging cars to speed through the intersection. They need to stop on red at a minimum." Okay, and let me see if my comment is in there. I don't know. There's multiple comments. I don't know if I can. I don't know if I can see. Oh, this is my comment, okay. "This intersection does not need to be replaced with a rotary. Just change the timer that allows a longer left green signal for cars coming from Route 28 South Sandwich to tail, as you say, to take a left onto Great Neck Road North." So that was my comment. And they're taking comments until the end of the, of the month.
I got three or four of them on.
Did you put some in? Okay.
I have them here, too.
Did you, where, where were yours?
Uh, let's, uh, uh, let's see, Meeting House Road and 28. Wanted a turnout so people could pass on the right, left-turning traffic.
Oh, gosh, where is that?
Go to Mashpee Commons, I mean, uh, go to the circle. It's one of those yellow ones, or, or. No, maybe the green?
Oh, here, it's one of these. Is this yours?
That beats me.
Here, at, and at many other left-hand turns.
Oh, that's me.
On Route 28, "It would be good to have a left-hand turn lane," very good, "or a turnout so that ongoing traffic can contribute, can continue past the turning vehicle and keep traffic moving. This would reduce driver frustration and safety and keep traffic moving."
That was me.
That's a good one. So anybody have any ideas?
I like to, my idea on 151 and Old Boswell Road. While they were doing the, the new road, I don't know why they didn't make a turnout to, to go on Old Boswell Road. You know, they should, like when you come down to go to the church, they have the turnout and you go on Donner's Lane. When you go up to 150, up 151 with Old Boswell Road, the high school.
Yeah, I'm right there.
On the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Should have made a turnout so you could go down Old Boswell Road. Now you have to go to the light and wait in traffic before you can make that turn.
We, we, we used to have a turnout and they eliminated it.
Eliminated it.
I never saw it coming. I reviewed those plans with Catherine.
Okay.
At, at the light intersection, and now it's, it's an acute turn. You have to go up and you have to come back.
Oh, that little, this little thing got eliminated?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that little, uh.
And that made it so much easier.
Yeah, that, that turn.
Add comment.
That is gone. And my wife, every time we're gone, they're like, "Why did they do that?"
I do the same thing when I go, because I come to work and you're, and I'm there. Why'd they do that?
Be, well, they, and I, I talked to them afterwards, Catherine, because the, they put the crosswalk close to the light, the intersection.
So Chrissy, do you know what they're talking about?
Way back.
Yeah.
Can you note that in our minutes that we want to add? I can't add. I must be blocked from a pop-up or something like that. I can't, see, I can't add. Oh, here it is. Hold on.
Add that.
Safety improvement idea driver? Okay. All right, so we're gonna say reinstall the right.
Put it back.
That'll be 20 years from now.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's all been redone and they won't touch.
No, I asked before they, Kathy, I said, "Why'd you do that before you?"
I missed that. I thought we'd always have that little turnout. And, nope.
You can put it in there, though. My other thing, Mary, all over the town, we have sidewalks. I don't understand why bicycles can't ride on the sidewalks. It's much safer, especially down here. You get people, nobody on the sidewalk, and people could ride their bikes safely, but they're on the road and it's.
So dangerous.
Yeah, and you're supposed to give them four feet. So I'm saying, I said, I stopped two bikers I was talking to. And I said, "If you're on Great Neck Road North, how do I give you four feet and not go into the other lane of traffic?" Well, that's what you're supposed to do, they told me, I'm there. I said, "Just widen the sidewalk." And they told me that they're not allowed to. I didn't understand that.
Right.
Is that true?
Unless it's marked for bicycle traffic, it's for pedestrians only.
Then they should make the sidewalks wider where the sidewalks are made.
Couldn't agree more.
With a lane, with a stripe down it, saying, "Bikers stay here, walkers stay there." It's so dangerous on the Cape, especially in the summertime, with the people with their families. You know, with the little kids on the bikes, if one fell over, you know, the, I don't know. But that's my two complaints on the, on safety issues.
And that, that's generic, not to one intersection.
No, that's all over.
Oh, it's all over.
Oh, one more thing. I was thinking like on Route 6A, you see a lot of bikers there because it's historical. You know how they have the signs, "Share, share with the bike."
Share the road.
Share the road.
I wish they could have, like if bikers go by, a flashing light shines up for like three minutes saying, "Bikers ahead." You know, because a lot of people don't even see that sign and they're riding, you go on Route 6 in the summertime and you get the bikers and some of them, instead of being behind each other, aside by side, and they're like, you know, I don't know, if they had a thing flashing, so I, I go by that sign, it's, "Oh, there's bikers ahead of me." They flash for like maybe three minutes and then go down so these people know. And you can have them set up every thousand, two thousand feet on like certain roads, like 6A. That's a dangerous road. A lot of people ride on that. All right, I'm full of my.
Some entrepreneur is gonna see this comment, make an awful lot of money. So install a new type of sign that when a bike goes by, it starts flashing so upcoming cars are forewarned. Is that a word?
Yeah, forewarn.
Of bikes in the road. I like it.
All right.
So anybody can do this? It's until the end of the year? Um, if you, if you, if any board member has any comments and they don't, aren't comfortable putting, just send me the comments. But again, it's relatively easy. You saw that I had a little bit of troubles figuring it out. But you can do it. Just Google, or in any search bar, write Cape Cod Commission, Vision Zero, and you'll come to the, the page. Right, you go down, you can read all about it, and you go to the interactive tool.
They also have a questionnaire, too.
They have a questionnaire?
Yes.
Let's see if we can find that. Do you think that's the comment form?
Oh, I guess so.
Let's see what the comment form is. Do, 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 do.
The survey.
State of Safety.
Oh, 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 state, state of cer, uh, survey.
I don't know where it comes from.
That's it, probably, State of Safety.
This is a knock about, it's on your agenda.
Yeah.
Knock about.
Knock about erosion issue.
Oh, yes.
I don't know what I did. I just wanted to give a really big shout out to Justin of Mashpee TV. He's gonna be a big, he's already been a big help today and he's probably gonna be throughout the whole meeting. Yeah, sometimes, because of, oh, here we go. See, that's not found. I did give, I did give copies, paper copies of the survey to the town manager's office and asked them to put it out throughout town. Okay? So I, and if, if nobody has any comments on the Vision Zero effort by the Cape Cod Commission, then I shall move on to the next agenda item. Okay? So we got a, we got a question from the audience, "What happens to the comments?" So the Cape Cod Commission has a consultant and they will gather together all the comments. Now typically what happens in a plan, all comments are printed out in the back of the plan. It, it becomes, you know, their raw data that's shared with the plan. And so that consultant is gonna look for trends, right, to see how the residents have identified priorities. So I can tell you right now, there's been a lot of comments about bicycles. So I'd be very, I'd be very surprised if they didn't have like some, some feedback on those comments about bicycles. Our roads are kind of narrow, right, and so we need to share the road. Everybody has a right to use the road. But there's, there's conflict between the bicyclists and the cars. So they'll, they'll probably see that trend in the data and the comments that are coming forward and hopefully they'll have some type of suggestions on how to make our roads safer. Their, their comment might just be, you know, "Adopt Safe Streets," which is a program from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, "and then implement Safe Streets." So that means making roads wider with a, a clearly marked bike lane, that kind of stuff. And you'll see newer roads have that already. Even our bridges, they're gonna be Safe Street Bridges. They're gonna be wider, but they're not gonna have more car lanes. Well, why is that? That's because they're increasing for that safe bicycle lane. Sound good? And there will be a public comment period, and hopefully I will be notified and let everybody know through the planning board and public comment at the SLAC board. And that's when, if you put a comment in and it didn't get picked up, that's when you send in comments on the plan saying, "Hey, you didn't, you didn't take my comment. It's really important about, you know, the, the Mashpee Rotary," that kind of stuff. Anybody else? Okay, you're welcome.
We can't start the meeting early enough.
Well, we can't start the 7-10 public hearing, but we can do other things.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip. I'm gonna go right down to old business. I'm gonna skip review of draft housing production plan and go to the proposed amendment to the ADU bylaw. So town council has been asked to spend some time on our zoning bylaw to see if we had to update it to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. So the Affordable Homes Act, this is very interesting. The language about ADUs in the, in that bill, I found to be a little puzzling, to change zoning. Well, it didn't change zoning. What it did was it made accessory dwelling units, ADUs, which are those accessory apartments on people's properties, they made them a protected use. So what's protected in zoning, right? Schools, educational facilities, churches, that kind of stuff, right? So ADUs now fall into that category. They're a protected use. And when you look at the language that they passed in the, in the Affordable Homes Act, all of a sudden, it makes sense. I was like, "How do they use that language? That's not gonna fit into our zoning." Well, it's because it's a protected use, just like a church. So this is gonna be really interesting. So there might be something in our zoning that has to change, and I'm just waiting for town council. We do have until February 10th to submit that, and hopefully we can.
So does that change if I want to put one of them up on my, on my property? Does that change?
You no longer need a special permit for the first accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on your property. It can't be overregulated. An ADU can be regulated in the same way as a single-family home, okay? But it can't be regulated over that. It also, there's something about parking, I, I, within certain areas of your town.
You're only allowed to require one parking space, although the applicant, the builder of the house can add two parking spaces if they want to.
Okay.
It's just a, a minimum, a maximum, not a maximum, but a minimum.
Right.
Or a, that you can exceed.
And if you're near a transit hub?
You can't have any.
You can't require any, but in their regulations, they are noting that, they're saying that a bus line.
Yeah.
Where you flag down the ride, you can't require one parking spot for the ADU in that area. So.
That's within a half a mile of Route 28 because the, the sea line, as well as, I think, the one up to Bourne, allows you to flag the bus.
Yeah.
So, yeah, looking for public comment on that, I, we can say public comment that that's a little bit too much.
Yeah, a lot of towns are fighting that.
Can't presume that, that the people who live on that bus line are gonna take a bus?
Yes.
Well, not only that, people live within half a mile of that bus line. Gotta walk to take the bus. And, you know, our bus system is not exactly like your urban bus system where they come every five minutes, 10 minutes.
All right.
So we feel that's too aggressive? I mean, I can, I can give them, too aggressive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was one thing that struck me as being, eh, half a mile of what we've got for buses, I mean, you know. Even if you're talking about the few bus stops that are permanent, like in the Commons.
Tom, your, your, your phone, your microphone is too far.
How's this?
Good.
Much better.
Okay.
You stole my microphone. I usually use that one.
So do you wanna say that it, so there are established bus stops? What do you feel about these?
Very few, other than Mashpee Commons and the Community Health Center.
Yeah.
And Roach Brothers. So I could think of those three as being established bus stops.
Versus being able to flag them down. So should we say that it's, that we're, we're comfortable with it being around a bus stop?
Yeah.
Now, let me, let me, let me measure how far I am from a bus stop before.
Are the bus stops utilized enough to center a, center a wheel around it? On how you can, on how many parking spots, basically?
So a bus stop that has buses that, how often do our buses run? Every hour?
Depends on time of year, I think, too.
More than that, but we need to know what the schedules are. It's, it's just not doable here, I don't think.
Has all the schedules.
Yeah, but down at the Mashpee Commons, there's no schedule.
All right, and, and frequent bus routes?
Good to meet.
Okay, all right, I'll send that into them.
I forget now, Mary, does it say you can't require a parking space?
Yeah.
Or does it prohibit providing any parking space?
No, you can't require.
Okay, so I mean, any logical person trying to take care of their, their new house owner on their property probably would put in a parking space just out of common sense around here, I guess.
So if people have comments and they're working, if they could go back into the hallway? Because we can, we can hear you up here. If you, if you have some more work to do, can you take your chatter out into the? Can you take your, if, if, yeah, we, we, like 10, it's, you know, you can just go out in the hallway. We won't start without you. Okay. All right. Anything else about ADUs?
Just that I had put in your packet the proposed Barnstable zoning amendment for ADUs. It's, uh, you know, out in the back there. Is that the beginning of the documents? It's right behind the, in effect, it's right behind the plans, I guess, for. In any case, it's back there with a Barnstable seal on it. It's at the beginning of the correspondence.
At the end, I think.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's at the beginning of the non-willowbend correspondence, I should say.
Okay, yeah, "Amending the code of the town of Barnstable to revise the definition of accessory dwelling units and to revise use and dimensional requirements for area definition and clarify parking restrictions and no owner occupancy requirement for ADUs." So I expect we will be having something like that in Mashpee. I don't know if we'll have it for, ready for May town meeting.
Well, you probably should try. The, the bylaw, I mean, the regulation goes into effect February 2nd and they recognize that most towns don't have a town meeting before then, but I watched a, they, they did a whole presentation online, the Mass APA Massachusetts Chapter. And, you know, the state realizes that February 2nd is not a convenient time for towns to be changing their bylaws, so. But they want to see you do it as soon as possible. Because it's gonna be in effect. In other words, if somebody comes in, even though you haven't changed your bylaws and they want to do one of these by right ADUs, and that's the, that's the key thing to this, is they put ADUs under Section 3 of the Zoning Act, which is all those things you can't regulate, like farms and churches and all of that. So now you can't reg, you can't regulate ADUs other than having, you know, they have to meet whatever setbacks and other requirements you have for a single-family home. But other than that, you can't do anything particular for, and you can't require special permits. You can't require owner, the owner to be on the property, which is a big deal when we first adopted ADUs. The neighborhoods went crazy thinking, you know, they're gonna have a party house there and who knows, may turn into that. But until now, we had a requirement for the owner to occupy one of the unions. That's gone now. And it's never coming back as, with ADUs as a by right, Chapter 3 Dover Amendment use.
Yep, so I ha, I have been in contact with the town manager's office regarding getting some time from town council.
Yeah.
So they have our request, so fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Does this new regulation have any time limit on minimal rental times?
Yes, I think there's something in there about short-term rentals.
You're allowed to restrict short-term rentals. You don't have to, but you're allowed to require them to be a longer-term rental. They, they, they understand that, you know, people don't want to turn into a hotel colony.
So yes.
Just so you know, Mary, the Zoom meeting starts at 7:00, according to the email we got from the SLACman's office. So at, in a minute or two, we should be turning that screen around and.
Is that something you can take care of for us now?
I can move the screen if you'd like.
Yeah.
Sure, why not? And if the TV guy wants to give me some, some help, come on down.
We usually put it in front of Chrissy.
Well, I told her, I promised her we wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
Make her, wouldn't isolate her from our meeting.
Unless Chrissy wants to come up and sit where Ed Pesci would. Do you want to sit at the table with us?
She's fine there.
She's fine? Okay, all right. And I can, I can see the rest of the audience, okay. I just didn't, I didn't know how far he was gonna go.
They can't see it, so, oh.
They can see it? I, I don't know.
Oh, they gotta make it bigger.
I thi.
They gotta make it bigger on the screen.
Justin, how do we get Zoom up on the screen? Because we don't need.
Yeah, it's 7 o'clock now. There's a button to push on your computer here.
Okay, all right, great.
Full screen, there you go.
Full screen, there you go, yeah. One, one, oh, no. There's Ed. And I assume that's, uh.
Ed.
Willow Bend's attorney, okay. So, yeah, we have two, two visitors.
All right, so, um, there's that, I, I think that, um, the amendment to the raise and replace will be too, we only have 10 minutes, so I think that will be too lengthy. I can quickly go to Chair's report, uh, report on Chair's activities. Um, again, I've been in contact with the town manager's office about, um, legal help to see if we have, need any bylaw changes with respect to the ADU bylaw, our accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and the recently passed Affordable Homes Act. The other thing I've been in touch with, um, with the, with the town manager is about staffing for our, our planning department. They have posted, and it might be closed at this point.
No, they have hired somebody.
I'm not there yet.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm not there yet. There's, there's two positions that are currently vacant, and Tom Fadala has come back as our consulting town planner.
Till Friday.
Yes. And, um, anyways, they have posted, it might be closed by now, for an administrative assistant for that office. So that was very important. There will be a recommendation to the Select Board on a candidate for town planner, stay tuned. I'm hoping it's going to be at the next, uh, uh, Select Board meeting. And if I notice it on the agenda, I'll let everybody know so that we, we can go. So, um, those are my activities, besides going to the, um, the Vision Zero, um, public meetings.
Mary, can I, uh, bring something up before it's too late? It's probably already too late, but, uh, there's an error on the agenda relative to the minutes.
Yes, we've already passed it, and we've tabled that.
Have you amended your agenda to include the two sets of minutes that you were supposed to?
Nope, we're gonna, we decided to table it and put them on the next agenda.
Okay, well, this is what comes with cut and pace, I apologize for the November 20th.
Yep. And, um, just, Tom, um, do you want to update, date us on the potential demolition delay by law?
Uh, in your packet, you have a copy of the demolition delay by law that was proposed by the Historical Commission as marked up as, as revised by town council. So that's what you have, and there's, some of the pages have some comments on the side, but that's town council's revision of what came to you from the Historical Commission.
It's a pretty good.
You like it?
Yeah. You know, because we lost a few old houses just recently.
Mm-hmm.
The one, um, near the playground, that big white house they built.
Yes.
Yes.
Old house.
Oh.
And then we lost a farm that was behind there.
The oldest house in town, you lost the Bourne Farm up on the, off the east side of Mashpee Pond, yeah.
Yep, they tore it all down and stuff, but this gives the town, all towns on the Cape have this, a lot of the towns.
Yes.
But this gives Mashpee, like, we see old buildings, maybe they get some contractors or some money to try to save it and stuff.
Right.
Which, which would be nice, but we don't have that much in Mashpee, like, houses, historical houses.
Less, no, yeah, we had a Historic District Commission meeting this afternoon, and they were quite upset about those two
Yeah.
that had a lot of history attached to them. The Sturgis House, yeah.
So this is something that we should take, we should read and bring our comments back next time?
Yeah, we'd like to get it, they would, they'd like to get it on the May town meeting.
Yeah.
Is this a, a zoning bylaw?
No, I think it'd be a general bylaw.
It's a general bylaw.
Yeah. But obviously, you guys can work on it and propose it. While we're talking about your next meeting, um, the first Wednesday of January falls on New Year's Day. So I'm assuming that you're going to cancel that meeting, and, uh, your first meeting will be in the 15th of January. And you might want to formally make a motion and approve that, just for the record.
Now?
Well, 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 I put it on the table. Let's see, why not, it's up to the chair.
Yep, I've accepted motion.
We approve the, from the Historical Commission.
Oh, no, I'm not done reading this.
No, no, I'm talking about.
We're just talking about scheduling our January meeting.
Canceling the January 1st meeting.
Make a motion to cancel the January 1st meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I think this is important, so.
Half of you guys are going to be too hungover to come to a meeting anyway, so.
All right, and we will have this read-up, and we will have, uh, an opportunity to comment on those.
Yeah.
On the draft demolition delay by law.
I like the idea.
I do, too.
Now, keep in mind, it's just delay, you can't delay it forever.
No.
You got to come up with some money to buy it or whatever to.
You can't prohibit it. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to take, um, a recess of two minutes, because I have a question for town council before we open up the public hearing, okay? It's an open meeting law question.
Oh, sure, sorry I'm late. It's okay, they've texted you, Mary.
Perfect, perfect timing. Yep.
Don't go that way. Go right that way.
You know what, I'm going to grab Mike's packet and give it to town council.
Tom, that's your check.
What's that? Oh, that's a check, a big check.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it, excuse myself for a second.
Give her Mike's packet.
She gave her, she gave her Chair's report already?
Yeah.
She gave her Chair's report?
Yeah, I think she did.
Forgot to abbreviate the town in Mashpee again. I put a lot of work into this, man. In fact, the whole board did, we were all sitting around the table after our last meeting stuffing envelopes for your public hearing notices. Yeah, 668. A lot of people, that included everybody in Willow Bend, as well as, you know, 300-foot per minute, so, heads up.
Hmm.
All these people for South, for, for Southport.
Let's see.
What else to be here for? Or maybe raise and replace.
Guess it's lucky you made all those agenda copies, Christine. Hey, Ed? Can you hear us, and can you say something to see if we can hear you?
Yep, I can hear you just fine, can you hear me?
Yep, okay, and we can see you, you can see us, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, great.
And I know I, I saw earlier Dawn.
Yeah, Mr. Pinto was on earlier, I'm not sure, there he is, he's back. Okay.
All right.
I'm still here.
And you, you can hear and see us, right, Mr. Pinto?
For our future.
Yeah, what with that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to mute you guys on Zoom. So I don't know if, uh, I, I'm going to open up the public.
We can mute ourselves, that's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect.
Yeah. So you have the hearing notice in your packet, ma'am.
I'm looking for it, thank you. Okay. Seeing that the, um, appointed time has arrived, the Chair opens. Our 7:10 PM public hearing. The applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, represented by John McElvee, McElney. The location is 275 Quinacrist Avenue. It's a special permit motivate, modification on remand from Land Court to add a 5.06 acre parcel on which construction of 12 residences proposed to the special permit for the Willow Bend Country Club project approved on March 18th, 1987, as subsequently modified. Um, and now I will read, um, the public hearing notice into the record. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. This notice is given pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, regarding a public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:10 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, to consider on remand from the Land Court a special permit modification application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 12-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinacrist Avenue, MAP 69 Block 36. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the planning board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacrist into the Willow Bend special permit. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. This is submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Chair Mashpee Planning Board, publications date Friday, November 29th, 2024, and Friday, December 6th, 2024. So prior to, um, me, um, recognizing the project proponent, I just want to say there was a Zoom link established for this meeting, however, the Zoom link was not published with a 48-hour notice to the public. So the people that are on Zoom, they may, um, enjoy viewing and, uh, watching us, but they cannot, um, offer, um, any type of testimony via that Zoom link. As such, seeing that, uh, both are extremely important to this proceedings, it is very doubtful that the, uh, planning board will close the public hearing tonight. Uh, just a heads up to the project proponent and the public on that. Just, um, just to let everybody know, if you've never been to one of these public hearings, uh, this is, uh, as Chair, this is the format I usually, I employ. We first, um, recognize the project proponent. In our rules, um, the project proponent, um, gets 15 minutes, but we've never enforced that, but just, just to keep everything timely, um, and that in mind. Then I usually go to the, um, board members to see if they have any, uh, questions. I advise the board members not to make any decisions too soon, uh, not to express any strong opinions on things, because we haven't gotten all the materials in for us to make that, uh, decision. We, if people might notice that Michael Richardson is not here tonight, he was unable to be here. He, uh, I asked him if he could be here at, at our next plan meeting, which is January 15th, and I reminded him of the Mullen Rule. So he understands that, he still wants to be seated on this matter. So, um, so the five people to be seated on the matter is Karen Faulkner, Michael Richardson, Dennis Belzerini, Dale Oakley, and myself, Mary Wagan. So, okay, so after we do that, I, I ask if the town planner has any, um, questions. We do have town council with us, it's Amy.
Quesal.
Quesal, Quesal. It's Amy Quesal, uh, from KP Law, um, and she's been helping us with the remand. So, uh, if you see that she wants to be recognized, the Chair probably will recognize town council. Um, at that point, I will open it up to the public. Everybody will get a chance to speak.
Yeah.
Everybody will get a chance to speak. Some boards limit, uh, public comment to three minutes. You know, I ask you to target three minutes, please no more than five, especially if you're seeing that a lot of people want to speak. Okay, and with that, I would like to acknowledge and recognize the project proponent.
Thank you. For the record, uh, Jack McElney, attorney for the project applicant, Southworth Mashpee Properties. With me here tonight, Dawn Pinto, who is counsel for the applicant in the pending Land Court action. Matt Eddy, I think, who everyone knows, uh, the project engineer. Kevin Klein, who is our wastewater engineer, and oversees the operation and permitting for the, for the Sorex Treatment Plant. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn briefly, because I, at the outset.
I can't take comment from Dawn Pinto. The Zoom link was not published with a 48-hour notice, and there's a pub that would cause an open meeting law violation. I'm not going to close the public hearing, um, hi, his testimony will have to be taken in at a different time. Maybe he can send it to somebody who's here in the room that can read it off their email.
That's unfortunate, um, you know, obviously, we have a large group of people here, that's a fairly simple task. And the bulk of this, you know, we are dealing here with a, a remand order from the Massachusetts Land Court that, you know, specifically defines the scope of this to the Land Court issues. So I don't know, there's a lot of, uh, purpose or to be accomplished relative to going forward without our legal counsel in that matter.
I absolutely don't want to go through the process without your legal counsel. I just cannot accept his testimony, it will be a violation of open meeting law.
Yeah, we didn't get your request within 48 hours, so, didn't get posted online.
We requested that several times, and this is a.
I only got it, I only got it Monday.
Planning board process. But in any event, um, let, let's proceed. You know, the remand, uh, has been issued by the Land Court. It specifies the scope of the hearing tonight, which is really, uh, to deal with two legal matters, and that's the extent of, of the discussion. The first is, uh, the, uh, enforceability, I guess, generically, of the 853 bedroom, uh, bedroom cap from the 1991, uh, special permit, including our request that that be modified to allow the development of an additional, uh, 12 single-family residents, as well as the remaining, um, undeveloped lots at, at Willow Bend. Or, you know, the elimination of that, um, cap. I will speak for, for Dawn here, batting, uh, in his place just quickly, but, uh, this is not new information. Our, our position is that the bedroom cap that was established in 1991, um, is, at this point. point, no longer enforceable because of a number of reasons. Most importantly is that that, that cap was installed and adopted in 1991 and is tied directly to the capacity of the Willow Bend Sewerage Treatment Plant, which was based upon 853 bedrooms when it was designed by Kevin Kline in 1990. So that's where that number came from. As far as we've been able to determine, that issue of the bedroom cap, admittedly, it's, it's never been amended, but it has also never come up in over 30 years despite 36 prior amendments of this special permit. You know, having, having said that, you know, we also believe that the bedroom cap is completely irrelevant since all of the bedrooms at Willow Bend are now being treated, are all connected to the Sewerage Treatment Plant, and therefore, any effluent from those bedrooms is being treated to drinking water standards. So whether there's 853, or 453, or 953, our view is it, it really doesn't matter. In that regard, we did, a year ago, Evan Lehrer and myself sat down. He prepared a memorandum for this board based on the available town records, which indicated, by his count, there were currently, I believe, 855 bedrooms at that time, actually built, that did not account for the 12 unbuilt lots. I believe that number is 10 today, and it also did not account for Cranberry Point. I conducted a census internally, based on internal records, which was slightly higher than that, at 890-something bedrooms. You know, we, we acknowledge that there are more than 853 bedrooms. Our, our position has been, and during the year-long process of public hearings, prior town council had advised this board that this board had the legal authority to modify that 853 permit condition, if it so wished. And if this board so wished, it also had the legal ability to impose conditions or mitigation requirements, which in this board's mind would perhaps ameliorate or compensate for any excess bedroom units that were out there. The board, in its decision, I think legally incorrectly, took the position that it was not able to modify the special permit because the project was in violation of that 853 limit. We objected to that, but nevertheless, the board did not consider those requirements. So we are here tonight to revisit those issues at the direction of the Land Court judge. We have resubmitted all the materials. We have resubmitted our mitigation proposals, which in short consisted of an undertaking to decommission and naturalize 5.3 acres of active cranberry bogs along Quaker Run in, in south of Quinacquissette. That would involve the excavation of all the existing vegetation, the growing medium soils, which are, in many cases, will have to be repurposed because of latent sort of nutrient and pesticide and fertilizer loads from what I believe is seven or eight decades of cranberry horticulture there. The estimated cost to Southworth to do that is $750,000. I point out in the materials that the town itself just spent over $300,000 of its own funds to accomplish or undertake a similar project, and I think it's the Chop Check Bog. Very similar project, very similar methodology to what we're doing. Second major component of the mitigation was a two-pronged contribution to affordable housing. The first was a $110,000 cash contribution. Mr. Balzerini had previously indicated he would support the project if we agreed to 100. That was not the case, but as a gesture of good faith and to demonstrate that, that we are here in earnest to try to find a solution that works for the town and works for us, we have increased that proposed contribution from 100 to $110,000. We have also agreed to grant a deed to, to the town or its designated affordable housing agency. We have had discussions with Habitat Humanity for that, of a one-half acre lot, which we own, which is located at the easterly side of the project off of the Cedar Cove neighborhood. It's Pompanesett Ave is, is the, is the address. It's on a paper street, but it is a developable lot. And, you know, finally, we have agreed, and this is really something that has been requested and, and is going to be done if, if we connect this project to the plant. Kevin, and this is Kevin Kline, in his discussions with DEP. We've also agreed to connect another employee housing home, which is about 400 yards from the entrance to Willow Bend off Quinacquissette. It's a four-bedroom house on a septic system. We would connect that to our plant. With that, and the retirement of the existing five-bedroom house, you know, the, there will be a negative, there will be a, a positive recapture of nitrogen in the overall project. In other words, the nitrogen load that exists today will exceed what would exist after the fact if we built the 12 units. As I, as I mentioned, we're happy to answer questions. Matt Eddy can, can speak to the projects. It has not changed since the last time the board saw it. We are still pending in front of the Conservation Commission. In light of the Land Court's order, that hearing has been continued to the second hearing in, in February. Kevin Kline has submitted an updated report to update the numbers verifying ample capacity at the Sewerage Treatment Plant to handle these 12 units. The plant, which is virtually 95% of the build-out is now, at Willow Bend is now connected. The plant has a capacity of 113,000. Over this past summer, it ran, on average, between 55,000 and 60,000 gallons. So we're using just over half of that capacity. There are active discussions with the town, other, other groups about the potential takeover of that plant as part of Phase Two of the town's wastewater plant. That's, we do not own the plant. The Willow Bend Community Trust does, but I know those conversations are active and productive. Finally, we have seen, as the board has, a number of support letters from various members at Willow Bend, owners. We have a number of owners who large, who run and own substantial businesses here at Mashpee with substantial employee bases, and they have weighed in on what they believe is the larger benefits to the Mashpee community of the project. So with that, we're happy to, to answer questions.
Can I just ask them one quick?
And discuss any of these issues.
Do you, can you give us? Did you receive all the correspondence in our packet?
I don't think he did. Willow Bend delivered three letters from residents there, and we have seven or eight that came in to the, by email mostly, to the town.
I have copies of what was submitted through, through Willow Bend, all the Willow Bend persons of interest.
Okay, so let's, let's make sure that.
If you want to, you want the other ones, I'll, I'll give you the copies.
That's fine, I can.
I haven't made a, I haven't made a list of them all, so I just want to make sure that you get them. Just real quick, real quick, no question, just kind of procedure. Did anybody else from your group that's here tonight want to speak now, or?
They're here to answer questions. I, you know, if there's something the board would like to hear on, we'll, we'll.
So, in our packet, it looks like we have the application. We have a letter dated November 22nd, 2024, from Southworth, that go, that.
Okay, thank you.
That goes through the mitigation. That's the one that you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. The deed to the property. Something about taxes. You paid your taxes, good.
Yeah.
And then, I just want to make sure I get this right. Okay, so this Sand Tech letter and packet is from Mr. Kline, that you were talking about.
That's correct, and it's a two-page.
And that's new.
It's a two-page letter, and then it attaches last year's reports, so it's simply an update which incorporates the latest flow data.
And then, and then you have a cover letter dated November 22nd. That's on top of the application.
Yes.
Okay, and I, I think that we both agree, both parties would agree, that we're gonna put everything that was submitted in the last, when we had the public hearing open for the, for the initial application to modify the special permit. All of those materials are gonna be put into this public hearing.
That's my understanding from Dawn, yes.
Okay. And I think those are mostly on the website, and I will do my best to work with the town manager's office to get all of this material up on the town's website, so it's all in one place. Did you want to say something real quick?
No, I was just questioning. I mean, you, I was obviously not here at the last hearing. Where, where are those materials that you're talking about that were submitted?
They're on the planning board website. There's a link to active special permit applications, or to active applications. And there was a, there's a link to Southworth, Cranberry Point, Willow Bend, and in there, you will see the original application, you know, correspondence that were sent in, the, the entire special permit, plus all the amendments.
Really?
The zoning bylaw, yeah, the zoning bylaw from then and now. It's got like everything we discussed and talked about. It hasn't been updated, but it is there, I saw it.
But I was particularly asking about, you said there were letters, the correspondence from the public that, so those are there, okay. All right, well, the next guy can take care of that.
Do we have to take a vote to put those materials in to the record? Nope, it would be part of this record. So as I promised, then, I was gonna open this up to questions from board members, and Dennis usually goes first.
Okay, you say 853 bedrooms. Now, maybe years ago, you tied in the condominiums. Are you counting those bedrooms too? There's a lot of bedrooms up in those condominiums.
Yes, yeah.
So the plant's still.
The town planner's number was 855, which included everything the town's records show. I had a slightly higher number when we did an internal assessment, but it's, you know, within 5%. I had about 896.
That number, 853, is for your property. Is that still counting the condominiums that are part of your property that you tied in?
Katuah Bay?
Katuah Bay, yeah.
No, it doesn't.
So how many, how many bedroom, so the plant's still.
I mean, I, I.
My question, Jack.
About 1,400 altogether.
My question, so.
On the wastewater treatment facility.
Right, and that's all contributing to the flow, which I cited at 50,000 to 60,000.
Okay, so they take all that into consideration when they do say it's worth.
Yes, yeah, our position has always been, let's connect everything we can to the plant.
Right, we, we liked that when you did that years ago. I mean, that was a good thing.
I recall that.
Yeah.
Never mind.
I thought it was a good thing. And my other question, when you first brought this to us, this plan, you didn't ask for a modification. You just asked if we could put this on a special permit. And then when you found out there was too many bedrooms, you know, that, that question, then you just wanted for the modification, and we said you couldn't do that. But I believe if you came in here and asked for the modification first, this would have been a done deal. It would have been, I think, it wasn't the planning board's fault that this got this far out of proportion. That's my opinion.
That, that's your opinion, I understand it, but if it could have been a done deal then, we're here to make a deal tonight, so let's see if we can do that. If there was, you know, no reason not to back then, then you've got at least 400,000 more reasons to do it tonight.
Anything else, Dennis?
Nope.
Okay, Dale?
Quaker Run, how much background research have you done on, on the history of Quaker Run? Do you know what it looked like before, the bogs, kind of 50, doing 5.3 acres of naturalization? Could we do naturalizing the whole system? Would that be more beneficial to the environment if we're gonna look at mitigation?
Yeah, I mean, the, the proposal right now is to take those, this 5.3 acres of bogs south of Quinacquissette, active bogs, that, and those are the bogs that are, fall on Quaker Run, as far as with the river going through it, not bogs that are removed off of it. And it's just, you know, there's, there's gonna be a restoration of those areas back to natural wetlands. As far as a study on what they looked like 80 years ago or 100 years ago, no, that hasn't been, that hasn't been performed. And as part as the, part of the restoration process of that, it would, they would be restored to what would be a naturally occurring wetland system in that type of setting. And those types, the details of all of the, the wetland restoration, as far as the actual work to occur, those details haven't been worked out. The process is gonna be, as we've talked about this with this board, and with Conservation, and with Drew, the Conservation Agent, is, here's, you know, the, the plan is presented to you all. Here's mitigation that's being proposed. We gotta get to a point where you say, we're in agreement, this makes sense, we're gonna move forward, and then, and this is how Conservation wants to do it, Conservation approves the project, then we will work out the specific construction detail of the mitigation, because that's a significant, there's a significant effort there. I mean, that's just, you know, and that's working through the detail with the experts in restoration. Fussin' O'Neil is part of our team. The town's hired Fussin' O'Neil for bog restoration previously. We've had a lot of dialogue, again, with Conservation and with Drew on this, and he's in 100% agreement as to that's, you know, how this is being handled. So there's not, you know, there's not the detailed analysis of the bog restoration construction plans, if you will, right? construction plans, if you will, right? We're saying, here's the area, these are the bogs, this is the area that's gonna be provided, it's an area aspect, is, that's how you determine the mitigation ratios. And then once we get to a point, hopefully, where if this board, we come to an agreement, we say, okay, we're in agreement that the benefits outweigh the, the cons, and then we get through Conservation with all the level of detail, then those, that actual mitigation work will occur. What we talked about with the Conservation Commission was Willow Bend would put up a bond for that mitigation work prior to the work starting, so that it would, you know, ensure that that work gets completed, cause, you know, it's gonna, it doesn't happen overnight, obviously, it's some process in doing that.
Can I follow up on that?
It's up to Dale.
Go ahead, Karen.
You know, first of all, maybe Matt, you can answer. The LEC Environmental Consultants, they said, these mitigation measures will provide significant benefit to the wetland resource areas, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
But they say significant, but they're not saying what it would be, and I'm gonna ask you, cause I'm a layperson, I don't know these details, but can, can they calculate the nitrogen and phosphorus in these five bogs right now as they exist?
I mean, right, there could be, yeah, there could be estimates determined, and it's part of-
Let me just finish my question, cause-
Yep, go ahead.
I may have the wrong question, okay? Can they determine what the concentration is in the five bogs right now? And then, when the mitigation, or calculate what they would be when this land is turned to natural state?
Yeah, I mean, part-
That'd be, that'd be one half of the part that I'm asking for. The other part is, and, and I don't have the knowledge on this, but I'm gonna ask you the question about whether, instead of spending seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to do this mitigation with these bogs, could you do something with nitrogen filters or some kind of advanced technology to lessen the nitrogen discharge from the plant?
Um, I'd probably defer to Kevin Klein on that as far as an upgrade of the plant. I'm not sure what the plant's treating to right now, as far, but it's, you know, the, the plant is, you know, performing, meeting, and it probably, you know, somewhat exceeding the groundwater discharge permit requirements, which is ten milligrams per liter. As far as, you know, it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollar investment out of that, and you're gonna get it down to, you know, three milligrams per liter, I don't know, is that something you-
That's exactly-
Oh, yeah, you'll have to come up and use the mic.
That's a loaded question.
In, in other words, Matt, would we get a better bang for our buck if something like that were done?
Kevin speak to the wastewater, and then I'll give you my thoughts on the wetland aspect.
Good evening, Kevin Klein with StanTech. Like Jack had told you, this, I actually designed this treatment plant. It was the second plant I ever designed back in the early nineties. The plant itself runs great, average nitrogen, we, we did an analysis, a three-year analysis, two thousand nineteen through the end of twenty twenty-two, and it has a discharge limitation of ten milligrams per liter of total nitrogen, it was doing five point six. The plant itself is designed for, it's permitted for a hundred and thirteen thousand gallons per day, but actually designed for a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and could accept more than that. The equipment's designed for about a hundred and forty thousand, the equipment and the effluent disposal, so there's excess capacity there. The plant has averaged about thirty-five thousand gallons a day. It doesn't, it is not a highly used wastewater treatment plant. The, so, we, we actually looked at, could we add additional treatment to it, or what could you do to get the nitrogen even lower? That was looked at a couple of years ago, and it's difficult to do when it's getting those levels already. So adding an additional, short of totally converting it to a membrane treatment plant, five point six milligrams per liter is about as good as you're gonna get.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's actually doesn't meet the planning board standard of five milligrams per liter that they set back in the eighties. You're talking about the DPW, uh, DEP-
DEP, the DEP standard, yes.
That's not the planning board limit.
Uh, the planning board limit, I believe, is five of nitrate, not total nitrogen.
Five of, of total nitrogen.
You've got in Mashpee one plant that meets that.
Could you say that again, please, Kevin?
Uh, getting below five, you probably have one plant, you have Mashpee Commons, that's switched over to a membrane plant a number of years ago.
Yeah, actually, the plant, the, the amphadrome at South Cape Village is doing better than that, too. Years, years of modifications added by Weston and Sampson.
Yep. And parts of trying to do, with operating a treatment plant, can they get lower on nitrogen? Maybe, but then they run a risk of increasing on BOD, cause you just start overfeeding the micro C or the methanol. But maintaining a, a total nitrogen, what, what the treatment plant has is average nitrate was three point one, average total nitrogen was five point six.
Right.
And the remainder is inorganic nitrogen, so just bound up, doesn't come out in the filter, doesn't, comes out in sand and stuff, but it's not a nitrate that gets into the groundwater.
Comes out into Papa Nessa Bay, though.
If it's inorganic, it doesn't.
Let me, let me explain where this idea came from. Mashpee Commons had an RBC plant similar to what you're doing, and they were getting, you know, decent numbers, but they, before they converted the whole thing over to an MBR, they, they added a nitrogen filter that was getting them well below five. And that was the suggestion is, what, what did, with the possibility of taking your nine hundred thousand dollars worth of mitigation and putting it into a nitrogen filter, not knowing what they cost these days, would that provide more benefit than? I have grave doubts about these cranberry bog, you know, so-called restorations. I mean, I've never seen anybody come up with a, a number of how much nitrogen that's reduced in the Papa Nessa Bay, if any. Maybe releasing more by doing all the digging up, so the, just the thought of, maybe the money can be better spent by upgrading the plant, and that covers all the units and everything in terms of the flow.
We, we have done a number of plants where they didn't have denitrification, and we added denitrification filters to them. And essentially what we did is we converted the existing sand filter to a denite filter by making a deep bed submerged sand filter. Sometimes you get better than five, sometimes you don't. One of the thoughts, with last time I did the evaluation of this plant, is when the filter needs to be upgraded, which it does every ten years or so, that we consider it at that point. It is, that you basically, it's not adding a piece of equipment to it, but it is a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of reconfiguring and redoing. In this one, I would keep the anoxic RBCs and take a look at converting the filter. But it is, it's an expensive endeavor, it doesn't necessarily get you any better. If you don't, you can get a little bit better, a little bit more nitrate out of here, but not a lot, and-
I'm just reflecting on the numbers that came out of Mashpee Commons when they did it.
Mashpee Commons was-
Different property, though.
And I do, and I'd have to go back, since I'm actually their designer, too.
The fail weight.
Well, yep, and New Seaberry and most of your plants.
All those RBCs, yeah.
But the big, the big part with Mashpee Commons was not the conversion to the denite filter, it was the conversion to a membrane plant.
Well, that was later, though. I was talking about this intra-measure that they did that was there for about ten years.
Want to convert this to a membrane?
It's-
That's rebuilding our plants.
Four million dollars or more. It's very expensive.
Yeah. Wouldn't be asking for that, no.
Yeah, and-
But it sounds like if the, if the, you're not replacing the equipment, you're just changing the setup of the sand filter to become a denite filter.
You're replacing everything except for the steel tank.
Okay, there's no new steel tank.
So, yeah, you are replacing-
You're taking the material out of it and filling it up with something else.
It's a lot more than that. It's a completely new underdrain system, it's different sets of pipes, pumps, it is, we just, I just did it on a treatment plant in Easton, and that conversion, it had a couple extra things to it, but that conversion was close to two million dollars, and that plant was forty thousand gallons a day.
Well, I heard you say something about three or four hundred thousand while you were talking earlier, is-
I think I can get that, I think I can get this one cheaper because I don't have to add a new flood equalization tank or a new final effluent pump chamber that I did on those, and it's not municipal as part of a school upgrade that came in really high, but this is larger, so it, it would be in, in excess of a half million dollars, but should be less than a million.
Well, I, I'm just making the suggestion that the money that you're proposing to spend on the bogs, and not much money really for affordable housing, you can't build a house for that money, might be better spent on upgrading the plant, do your best. And I know you're talking to Jared and about the town taking it over, that's always been the intention of the town, and, but as we take over plants, our intent is to bring them down to three milligrams per liter, so he might be able to get us closer to that before the town takes it over.
Very interesting.
Save everybody a lot of money, but I just think the bog conversions are a waste of money, they're, you know, a lot of money for nothing.
Well, we, we were asked by this board to, to look at the bog conversion and the restoration. I mean, when we originally started this process a year and a half ago, the biggest concern was water quality, and we were asked to respond to that, and, you know, frankly, I mean, I, I think the, Southworth would be open to spending that money elsewhere. Personally, I, I think it's a crime that, you know, that Willow Bend Plant's been operating at thirty percent of capacity for the last thirty years, and all that opportunity, the town has never been able to find its way to taking that over and connecting, I mean, to me, what I would do is spend that money connecting the condo Pheasant Run up on Cape Drive or something, that's, you know, I mean, we've done that privately with Katuah Bay, we did it with Shoestring Bay, so I agree with you, you could get more bang for your buck, but, but we were told this board was interested in water quality as the primary concern, something.
We didn't have Mr. Tom Fudala as our, as our consulting planner.
Chairman of the SOR Commission for thirty-three years, yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to respond to.
I just, I just think it's a, a, a better bang for the buck to try to improve your water quality at the plant.
The architect of our, of our wastewater plan is-
Cause I don't hear anybody saying what level of nitrogen reduction you're gonna get from all of that money thrown into the cranberry bogs.
I mean, you know, that could be analyzed, too, but also, I mean, just real quick, never mind what's there and what, you know, from a, the restoration of the wetland system, and what it's gonna do, just from an overall environmental impact all the way around, from nitrogen to habitat, the whole nine yards, active, what happens in active cranberry bogs? They're putting it, putting in fertilizer.
Well, yeah, but, right, right, right?
There's an elimination, just let me finish, that's an elimination of nitrogen right there, cause they're not putting the fertilizer in, okay? One other point I just wanna make on this, and I think, those are all good ideas, you know, and these, maybe these are opportunities, and I think what Jack came up with, as far as instead of trying to upgrade the plant, for, for a miniscule increase in, in nitrogen reduction, connecting-
Applied to a lot of gallons.
That's, that's all, you know, that's like the Katuah Bay, that, that's all about the mitigation, you're taking those systems that are on septic systems and you're connecting them to a plant, that, that's what it's all about.
But the bog isn't like that, the-
No, I'm not talking about the bog, but then just real quick, the one other point I wanted to say is, from the, the bog standpoint, we just have to remember, and so this is what we will have to kinda work through, we have this board, but we also have Conservation Commission, and there are mitigation requirements that we have with them, so we can't necessarily say we're not doing any of that, maybe, I don't know, maybe the commission, if we come up with these different scenarios and we show the overall benefits, but I'm just saying, we have, there's other, there's another commission that we have to deal with, too, right, as far as just meeting requirements, so.
They like, they like-
Thank you for reminding us that.
You have to deal with them because you're proposing to do the wetland mitigation, you know, otherwise you've got some setback issues that they're gonna be looking at.
Correct.
Ten of the houses within fifty feet of the wetlands, but just a suggestion that it may be more, since there's no number that you, anybody can give you for how much nitrogen you're gonna remove from the Papa Nessa Bay system by doing that cranberry bog work, you can get a number, pretty good idea of how you can improve, you know you're gonna get a reduction in nitrogen by putting nitrogen filters on the plant, and it applies to all those bedrooms, and if you tie somebody in, that'll also be nice, but I don't expect you to pay for, you know, the, the other condominium that jump in.
When it comes to like, you know, the actual restoration detail of wetlands, I'm not the expert, I mean, Fussin O'Neil, that's why we brought them in as a, at the team, but, you know, I could, depending on, you know, what the dialogue and thoughts are, you know, I could reach out to Fussin O'Neil and, you know, because they've done many, and is there, they might have some, you know, I'll, I'll say anecdotal, that's probably too weak of a word, but, you know, like information that might give us some at least general guidelines-
Yeah.
Of what, you know, what you'd expect, you know, just, I mean, and again, just one, just, you know, forget, okay, we're not gonna put fertilizer in the ground anymore as an agricultural use, or pesticides. Right there, just cut that out, and then also see what else happens when you get through, you know, this, the actual restoration process and what's going on.
You guys are not normal cranberry bogs, because right from the first original special permit, the commitment was made that these would just be for the visual character of them, not for production. So you've always committed to be low fertilizer use to begin with, and I'm pretty sure when you went to the Cape Cod Commission and the DRI and they made you do all of that collecting of all your rainwater and all of that stuff, that, um-
That was on the golf course.
That was probably even, even more improvement in terms of-
But at, at the end of the day, it's an agricultural use established at a wetland.
But you've already committed, and I'll, I'll, I'll bet, while you've owned it before that hostel, or while you've owned those bogs, they have not been your typical bog where they come in in helicopters and spray the whole place with pesticides and fertilizers, you know?
It's, it's managed.
Yeah, I mean, it's managed for the appearance, not for production.
Right.
Like from your first special permit, that's what you committed to, so I assume you've been doing that. So, you know, it's not like taking something bad out of production, you've actually got a good, low nitrogen situation there that you'd be taking out of production.
But it's still nitrogen being added, it's-
Yeah, but we don't know how much. See, that's the thing, I've never seen any, on any of these, I mean, the town's working on them all over the place, cause, you know, that's the latest fad, but I've never seen any number for how much nitrogen you're gonna reduce going into either Papa Nessa or Wacoit Bay systems from any of these bog eliminations. And to tell you the truth, there's a historical character to it. We've lost all of our bogs in Mashpee, except for yours. There's a reason your bog house sits on the top of the front page of the town's website, you know, because that's a historic, attractive thing.
So, I'm not gonna-
Certainly the aesthetic feature of-
I'm not gonna put it in the parking lot, it's gonna be an active item, hopefully later tonight. I'm gonna get to you again, don't worry, Tom.
Yeah?
Yeah, so we haven't made it down to you yet, stop, don't cut the line, all right, so-
I fell in with what Mary was talking about.
So, I, I'm gonna come back to you, too, can we go back to Dale?
Sure, I'm, I'm-
Oh, good.
Fine.
Good, Dale, anything else?
I think I'm all settled.
Gee, you started off a really good conversation, Robert?
Yeah, the only thing I, I wanna say, we, we have some black and white documentation of special permits dating back nineteen ninety-one, plants that are built in nineteen ninety, ninety-one. Very, very well documented and working, I guess, pretty, pretty properly right along for, for decades. Nineteen ninety-one, let's say, is date X, date X had an environment of what it was in, in nineteen ninety-one, and I think the, the key word in nineteen ninety-one in Mashpee was development. Develop, develop, develop. Move along five, three decades to two thousand twenty-four, the key word is water quality, environmental protection, and non-development. I just want this board and the people of Mashpee to voice their opinions on what the current state of affairs in Mashpee is, and what their wishes are, and that the board reflect those wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I'm gonna go back to Karen, I'm gonna go back-
I just do one introduction on that, the town of Mashpee, all the way back to nineteen eighty-four when I came here, the number one issue was water- when I came here, the number one issue was water quality, water quality, water quality. It's never been developed, 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 that's what was happening to us, that was not what we wanted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, going back to you.
Yes, no, I don't, I don't have anything further to add.
That was it, that was it, okay. So, get, let's, hopefully today we can, we can have an action plan, you know, towards looking at that mitigation and the different options, you heard us a little bit, but right now I'm gonna, unless you have something else to say, I'm going to open it up to, oh, Tom, did you want to say something?
There's just one thing I got to let everybody know, we got, one of the butters sent us a letter questioning whether or not this project would have to go to the Cape Cod Commission for a modification of the DRI that they issued in 2002, and I've been waiting for two weeks for an answer from the regulatory officer at the commission, and all I got this afternoon, after calling her at four o'clock, not, not having got any answers, was that she would like Willow Bend to call her and set up a meeting to talk about it. There was a slight implication that it, it might actually require commission acting, because we're in a weird situation where we had to open a public hearing, and the commission's leader said, you know, yeah, go open your hearing, and, and we've got a deadline after you close your hearing of 30 days to make your decision, but.
So who is this person, who's this person's name?
What's that?
Who's this person at the Cape Cod Commission?
Jordan Veloso's her name, she's the chief regulatory officer. I, I sent Jack an email this afternoon, after I talked to her, I sent him a notice.
Did you see that?
I didn't want to bring it up.
I saw it.
In case they said it wasn't, you know, but they didn't give me a definitive answer, I want them to talk to them.
Can you do me a favor, can you just forward that to town council?
There she is.
No, I mean the email.
Oh, I, I didn't get an email, I've been waiting for an email. I, I had to call her at four o'clock, and I got over the phone, they should come and see us.
How about this, how about the email that you sent to Jack, you forward to, to Amy?
Okay, well, this is, you know, this, all it says is that.
Okay, yeah. We want to keep Amy in the loop, all right.
Say much, other than giving her her phone number.
That's fine, it's just, it is documentation, that's, it's easier for a town council to track all that stuff.
I think I might have actually printed it out for the meeting here.
Okay. All right, so I, I don't have anything else to add to what the board members have already said, and I really like the way this discussion about mitigation is going, to kind of look at all the different options. I would like to open it up to the public, and they're going to, yeah, they're going to need those mics, thank you so much. Okay, so come right up, so. Yeah, so.
Could, could I just?
No, wait, wait one second.
Before anybody leaves, your next meeting, don't forget, is January 15th, so that's when you're likely to reschedule or continue this hearing. I won't be here.
Hi, so, welcome, welcome, when you come up, please give your name and your address. Hi.
I think everybody should bring their own chair.
I think so too, I have a yoga ball at work, go ahead.
You're not going to yell at us about Blue Castle Drive, are you?
I don't know if I'm going to remember everything, because I have to get up at a horrible hour tomorrow, so I'm tired today. Eric Adams, 175, 4 Lowell Road, Questionet Valley condominium Mashpee, 24 years here. I thought I'd stay a year, but here I am. So, I'm glad to hear about water, and I think about Willow Bend, I wrote a letter, but honestly, I don't have it in front of me, so.
It's probably in the, if you did, it's in the packet that all the members have, including town councils and your packet there, yeah.
So, basically, I mean, it's a short story, it's overdevelopment, it's taking a leftover piece and trying to squeeze more money out of it, it's not really caring about the water quality and, like, the big issue, which is wastewater treatment and ancient ways. I, I don't think it's complicated, and it also impacts, and I, I spoke, I guess it was last August, I think it was at 9:30, I spoke about the, the little piece next to Questionet Valley that they want to make into affordable housing, I'm all for affordable housing, but not where there's already a traffic issue and already a lot of density, you know? I mean, people who live in affordable housing should have space and good water and, like everybody else should have, no? I don't think I have more than that to say in this, you can give me my letter.
So, Tom, do you have her letter?
Well, you all have her letter, it's the second one.
Somebody read it, Dennis, do you want to get my letter?
I don't have it.
It's right here.
I don't have it.
Here's somebody else's, read it.
Mary read it.
The one with the yellow stuff.
I've, I've got it, Mary.
Oh.
Want to read it?
Erica.
Yeah, Dennis can read it.
Do you want, do you need the letter, or you want me to read it out loud?
No, I'd like to hear it read by Dennis.
No.
I understand from residents, Willow Bend neighborhood, that it, again, it is again petitioning the planning board to approve more homes to be built on their property where this neighborhood already exceeds its original contracted bedroom allotment with the town, and that monetary compensation has been proposed along some land donations. Please, comma, I ask our town leaders that this appeal to their failed application should be denied. As a Mashpee resident of 24 years, I look, I have watched our town become endangered and polluted by both an excess of traffic and population density that far exceeds what we can handle as a town. However, I do support subsidized housing, sewers, and traffic lights. Okay, thank you, well said.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that's here tonight that would like to comment? Hi.
My name's Teresa, AKA Terry Cook, I've been a resident of this town for 43 years. I've lived next door to Willow Bend for, since their existence, I actually lived in my house before Willow Bend existed, and I will tell you, they have been nothing but the best of neighbors to us. They're always willing to try and do what's right. You've asked for mitigation proposals, they, they seem amenable to them, I wish that you would put some more credence into what they have offered to do. I know that there's a much bigger problem with the quality of our water, but there, I can tell you, I walk through Willow Bend every single day, twice a day, and most of those homes aren't occupied, there's no one there, they're not even close to capacity as they've testified this morning, I mean, this evening. I just, I don't understand why we can't work something out with them, they've brought much-needed tax revenue to this town, and have put very little load on our services in this town. I think it's appalling that we keep on running this over and over and over again, I think it's time that something comes to a, a head here. Yes, I do agree that that's a, a tough bend in the road where they're proposing the 12 units, but I believe there's enough property there that they can do something to make plenty of parking and to make sure that it's in, in good order. Also, the house that exists there now was a very dear friend of mine's house, it was five bedrooms, I heard Ms. Attorney McElhenney tonight saying that they would be demolishing that and doing a, a four-bedroom house, so they're going from five to four. Also, the biggest thing to me is the ample capacity at that plant. I don't understand why this has taken so long, I mean, this was first, this is almost two years now that we're coming up on in February, by the time you folks make a decision. It just seems like every time it looks like there may be a decision made, more things are added to what we're asking Willow Bend, excuse me, Southworth Properties to do. So I am speaking very strongly in favor of them. When I first moved into my home, I'm on the corner of Quinequuset Avenue and Angelo's Way, it's diagonally across from me where this, this development would be, I'd be directly impacted by traffic and, and whatnot, but I strongly, strongly support them, they've been nothing but good neighbors and good residents of this town, so I, I hope you'll give it due consideration with the mitigation that they've proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? Yeah, grab them, you can grab a mic and go up there if you want, whatever you want.
No, I'm more comfortable speaking standing, that's what I do for a living.
And just put it really close so everybody can hear you.
Okay, so, my dear friend Terry, bless her heart, I love her so much, and I disagree profoundly on this issue, profoundly. But first of all, before I talk about why I disagree with Terry, I love her so much, I want to talk about the problem that you have procedurally. This is a development of regional impact, it should have gone first to the Cape Cod Commission. So what I have here is.
You can give it to town council.
What?
Yeah, okay.
So people can read this, I don't know what you're going to do about this, but it's pretty clear.
You know what, don't talk while you're away from the mic, just because I, I need everything recorded carefully, because we're on remand.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is definitely a development of regional impact, and I think we need to have a formal decision from the Cape Cod Commission before this moves forward. The main thing that I pick out here is if it's going to have an effect on another town, it definitely is, if it's going to have an effect on the environment, it definitely is, and if it's inconsistent with the regional policy plan, it definitely is. So, I'm not sure how this entire thing happened before there was a DRI discussion with the Cape Cod Commission, but it's up to you to figure out what you do about that. So I did deliver a letter to you, and it has two articles from the Mashpee Enterprise, which discuss the issue of ancient ways. Ancient ways are very, very important in the town of Mashpee. It's a shame what happened to the Wampanoag people who've been here for thousands of years, they've lost pretty much everything, but the one thing that they weren't supposed to lose was the ancient ways. They have lost their ancient ways. I know this because I looked at some of the ancient ways yesterday and today, and they're blocked off. A husband who's going to speak, although he doesn't really want to, but he will, has photos of where the ancient ways are blocked off, because we tried to go down some of them yesterday and today, no can do, no can do. If you go down to the end of my road, Simon's nearest road, and turn left, that's supposed to be open to the public, there's a decision from the zoning board of appeals, February the year 2000, that says that road must be left open to the public. Yesterday afternoon, I went and sat and watched there, a fellow from Mashpee Commons was trying to deliver flowers, he couldn't get in. That has been open to people forever, but ever since Joe Deech took over this property, it was closed. So he asked me, what do I do, I have to deliver these flowers? I told him how he could make a convoluted route all the way back, go in here, go in there, but the thing is, that arm, there's a traffic arm there that used to go up all the time and people could just go in, it's changed now, it's changed, and if you don't know the code, you can't go in, regardless of what all of the agreements say since 1987, that those ancient ways have to be open to the public. That's very important to me, because I lived there, it's important to the neighborhood, it's a safety issue, now we have only one way to get on and off the peninsula, what if that way is blocked and there's an emergency? What if the fire department has to come? What if someone is dying and needs an ambulance? And you might think this, I'm exaggerating about this, but, you know, all summer long we had people there building sewers and you couldn't go through, so we need that road, he's cut it off from us, you know, I don't have the photos, Greg has them, he'll show them to you. So I think it's really, really important to consider how this company has not conformed to its special permit over the course of 19, since 1987. I know Terry thinks they've been a wonderful neighbor, I don't, I think when they're there, the traffic is awful, the noise level is horrible, it's just had made the neighborhood, to me, insufferable, to me, it's made the neighborhood insufferable. So, I know that in the last hearing you guys had last spring, we discussed this, and Troy Miller said, oh no, I've made a point of making sure that everybody can use the ancient ways, well, you can't, and later on Greg's going to tell you about that. So the point that I want to make here is, Terry is asking why we're back here again. We're back here not because of the fault of this board, we're back here, Terry, because of the decision that Joe Deech has made. This board said no, this board was pretty clear in saying no, this board has every right to say no. They, we are not required to allow them to build 12 houses on what amounts to four acres, because not one of those acres is wetland, hope I didn't break something there. So, to me, a chutzpah of this guy with endless amounts of money to give to attorneys, forcing you guys to go through this whole thing again is awesome, it just takes my breath away that he would force people to go through this. But I want to talk to you people about what would happen if he threatened you, because I'm taking this return, I'm taking this as a threat, I don't know if you guys are, but this is a threat, I have all the money I want, I can sue and sue and sue if I want to, that's how I'm perceiving this action. What would happen if you gave in and changed your mind, allowed them to build 12 houses on four acres of land? Every time another developer in this town wanted something and you told him no, they'd say, not to worry, I have more money than the town, I can just take them to court and take them to court and take them to court until I get what I want. So my last major issue, and there's a lot more in those letters, is traffic, 12 houses on four acres on Quinequuset. One of the things that I've noticed in the 35 years that I've lived here, there, is that traffic on Quinequuset is out of control now, it's dangerous, it's dangerous, if you walk down that road now, there's always going to be somebody that's going to speed past you and honk their horn, make as though they're going to run, run you over, it didn't used to be like that. Do we need another 12 houses? So yesterday, I was driving down Quinequuset towards Kattuah, and I think Kattuah would have a lot to say about this, and suddenly the traffic in the middle of Quinequuset stopped. What is this, I say, 2:30 on a December afternoon, a school, that school's still, schools are still in session, why is this traffic stopped? Because now, and I've never seen this before, anyone who wants to make a right turn into Willow Bend property there has to go through a guard who says, oh, you're going onto a military base, you have to stop, you have to state what your purpose is, you have to show ID, you have to say who you're visiting, and then she'll decide whether you can go in or not. I have never seen that, never seen that, that was always an open area, it's not a gated community, it was not meant to be a gated community, but right now, they're behaving as though it's a gated community. So when you have four or five cars lined up on Quinequuset stopped in order to make a right turn to get into that place, that's a problem, it's dangerous. It's dangerous, and it's not the right thing. So I would caution the board, when you think about how you want to vote here, you already said no. And as our attorney friend here said, nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. They haven't given you a new plan. They haven't rethought these things. It's the same plan that you said no to in March. Why would you change your mind now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I have letters. Should I hand out the letters?
What, what letter do you have?
It's a new letter.
From you or?
Me, from me.
Yeah, okay. Yeah?
Yeah, what I do is write.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Well, I gave it away.
The only one that's...
Thank you.
Hi, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Greg Auger, 249 Simon's Narrows. And Wendy is my wife. She's a tough person to follow, I'll tell you.
Just point the, the mic up because...
You're taller.
You're taller.
Here we go. All right. I just passed out some pictures that were taken today. Wendy and I visited Tom, and we went through some of, some of Tom's plans. And the axis that Wendy was talking about was off of Simon's Narrows into what is now called Shoestring Bay Road. Used to be called Bryant's Cove Road. And right on this plan, it says, note, inhabitants of the town of Mashpee shall have rights of passage over all location of Bryant's Cove Road as shown on these plans. This is right from Tom today. And that first page is the gatehouse that Wendy was talking about, which we used to be able to go right in and go right into Willow Bend. Now, the second page of what I gave you is off of Quinnequissette. It's a road called Simon's Road. And if you look at the little sign on the right of the picture, it says, it's a public way. Well, we drove in there. We got maybe 300 yards in. Flip to the next page. It ends right at a runway. I'm, I mean, a fairway. Not a runway. So that, we're assuming, is also an ancient way, and it just completely ends right at a, a fairway. I think that's, that's a terrible, terrible thing. And I think I will second with Wendy that I would stick to your guns. You made a decision. Stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just, just for the record, not the second one, but the first one, Bryant's Cove Road, that was a previous subdivision by a guy named Mr. Cummings that had that subdivision approved, and with that notation on it, that Bryant's Cove Road was supposed to stay open. It was later bought by Willow Bend. It's not part of your special permit area. But the statement is right about the notes on the plan.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Still Peoples. I live on 2 Shipwreck Drive in Mashpee. I've lived at that address for the last 50 years. I moved here in 1974. Mashpee had 3,000 people when I moved here. We've obviously grown a great deal, fivefold in those years. My concern is, in terms of development and the growth, Mashpee did not have Willow Bend. Simon's Narrow Road was a dirt road. I used to run down that every day. No houses. And obviously, we've had a great deal of building and development. And, you know, I, I've accepted that. That's progress. But I think we're at the point that we need to be concerned about where we go with Mashpee and what development we allow. And I think when we have a project as big as Willow Bend that has already reached a maximum in terms of bedrooms and build outs at this point, that when they ask for an additional development that's going to put 12 units on four acres of land, I, for years, rode a bicycle to work, committed to work by bicycle. I still, every day, ride by 275 Quinnequissette. And the traffic, obviously, has increased a great deal to the point that, you know, it's, it's worrisome because it's not a very wide road. So when I think we're looking at giving an opportunity to expand on wetlands and environmental concerns, water concerns, and those other issues, that we need to think hard and fast about where we go. I think if we're talking about workforce housing or low-income housing, which we do need in town, that'd be a consideration. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about expanding a development that has already, you know, had a great deal of development since I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have your letter, too. Hi.
Hi, I'm William Bogan. I live at 3 Starboard Drive on Mashpee Neck. My house also is closely adjacent to Willow Bend, about 100 yards away from one edge of it, I guess I would say. And, well, I'm a relatively recent resident of Mashpee. I have a lot of experience in living in places that were deeply impacted by development and took widely varied approaches to it, ranging from utterly laissez-faire in the rapid overdevelopment of the city of Atlanta when I was a kid, which turned into a water disaster for much of the southeast. They don't have any water left. And in the town north of New York City, had a very different approach and did set limits to development. And the question to me that this process has brought up is really deeply concerning, how will the town set and enforce reasonable limits to development? Which is what I heard some months ago, seemed to be the intent of this board. And I find it concerning that there is such a, an opportunity that this would be kind of edged past by focusing on what appears to me as a lot of minutia, which is all real. And my personal opinion is that one of the worst ways to set limits is to invite the trade-offs of these, the type of givebacks that are offered, that really advertises the willingness of an entity to let, let the right people go around whatever limits are set. So that's, that's what's on my mind, and I appreciate the chance to tell you about it.
Thank you. Mike. Mr. Ron Hock. Hello, how are you?
I'm just fine.
Mike Ron Hock, 104th Grass Road. Just a, one, first, just a preface is, this bog that we're talking about, who owns that bog?
Willow Bend.
Willow Bend owns the bog? Willow Bend rents the bog out? And they're, they're responsible for any pollution from that bog, correct? So in their own words, they're here to make a deal. Okay? That, that bog is their responsibility. It should not be part of a deal. If that's an issue, fix it. Don't come here asking for something you don't deserve in, in exchange to fix the mess that you're responsible for. Sorry. And in their words, we're here to make a deal. I'm sorry, but I don't think the town of Mashpee is here to make a deal with anybody. If, if, you know, if, if you're, if you, their argument is that our plant is overburdened from what we agreed to. But we've always been overburdened from what we agreed to, so it doesn't matter at this point. Well, I'm sorry, but if the speed limit's 40 on a road and you habitually break the law at 40, over 40 miles an hour, when you get caught doing it, still the law. Doesn't mean that you can say, okay, well, now, I've always gone 60, so let's go 60. I'm sorry, but that's not okay. And, you know, that's, 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 that's not an argument to be made to say, well, okay, oh, well, we've got, the other argument is that, well, we've got 800-plus bedrooms hooked there, and we're monitoring, and we're only using a third of the capacity. Well, you know, my own home, I have a four-bedroom system. Only two of us live there. We very rarely have anybody visiting. So why can't I have 10 bedrooms? Because if you put a meter on my output pipe, I'm only using enough for two, one bedroom, really, actually. So why can't everybody in town have 20 bedrooms at their house? Because the system is only being used by, equal to one bedroom. That's what they're asking for. I'm sorry, but I say, stick to your guns. Go develop something else, somewhere else where it belongs. Or build a bigger plant and then come back to us and talk to us. Forget it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else here in the public that would? So I feel, I feel really bad that there was no Zoom link advertised with a 48-hour notice. So I'm just going to let everybody know that for our next, that I doubt very much we're going to close this tonight. In our next, our next meeting, we will have a Zoom link that will be advertised. And I hate doing it, but I will do it and have, be able, people be able to, to Zoom in. I, I will ask for technical support from our staff and IT so that I, I'm famously good at starting Zooms and terrible at recognizing and getting people on to unmuted. So, but we will do the best we can. There's off, there's obviously an appetite for that, for, for that. So if there's nothing else from the public, I, I think that we should discuss what our next action item is. I, I know that the project proponent gave us a number from their internal census on bedroom counts of 896. I just would ask for the other bedroom counts, things that are... I, I need to know if that 896 includes bedrooms that are under, currently under construction, under permitting with the building department, and under the special permit? So that we're capturing everything?
What about the condos?
So Dennis asked me, what about the condos? Are you talking about condos that are in the Willow Bend?
No.
Outside?
Outside of Willow Bend.
Kootenai Bay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not my, that's, I'm, I'm talking about anything that was, um...
Okay.
Kind of like, it falls under the jurisdiction of the special permit and all their modifications. Okay. I'm hoping that the project proponent and town council can check in with the Cape Cod Commission. We do not want to mess that up. So anyways, I will, I will leave it to town council. You know, Tom Fadala is transitioning out of being our consultant, but we can always get you in touch with him. I, I...
I can, I, I've spoken...
Yeah, I know where he lives, so anyways. All right. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the testimony on the ancient ways. Throughout the years, every time Willow Bend has come here, Dennis has always said, hey, that ancient way isn't open.
Well, me and Tom put, put a lot of the signs up there.
Well, we didn't put the signs up. As a matter of fact, I was happy to see the one public way sign that is there on...
But we, we did the whole thing.
Yeah.
Didn't they do that once before? They put a mound up where the ancient ways was?
Well, that's still there. That's, yeah. But that's where the board relocated the ancient way through the condo area north of Quinnequissette and still supposedly gets out the Sampson's Mill Road.
I don't know what to do about this matter of the ancient ways.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, thank you.
I don't think it falls under the jurisdiction or the, the remand order that you had from the, and town council can give you the real on that. It's a new subject. It's not one of the items that the judge was telling you to talk about. What's your opinion, Amy?
So, so I would agree. It's not, it's not mentioned in the remand order. However, I don't know if the, if the requirement to keep open ancient ways is in a special permit somewhere. And if so, and if they're not keeping these ancient ways open, they would be in violation of that special permit. So I guess I would just, I would suggest that, that they look into it.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be under this, you know, in this forum with regard to this application, but they could be in violation of a special permit.
Yeah, that's the thing. It might be a viola, I mean, it's the very first special permit has the language clear as day back in 1987. And there were actually portions of Simon's Road and, I forget the name of the other road, they were actually relocated at a public hearing by the Board of Selectment. It got to that point in terms of part of the project. Remember that, Jack, right? Moved the one that crosses the golf course that's no longer there.
So I, I, what I want to do is figure out a plan on how to address that.
Let me say, I agree with town council. It's not part of this hearing.
Yeah, I do.
I also categorically disagree with what was said.
This is why I didn't want you to get out...
A lot of misinformation. Well, it, it's, Shoestring Bay has never been...
Tom, let me recognize people, okay?
Shoestring Bay has never been a public way. The public way is called Simon's Narrows Road.
Yep.
Oh, no. Bryant's Cove Road.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this conversation. I'm sorry.
Behind the fence of Willow Bend. 90% of that's not on our property. It does go through the property, and it is open, and you can access it through that gate. It's meant for a walking path or horses. There is a plan. It's 10 feet wide. You can't, it's not for vehicles. Tom and I used to have this argument. He would say it's a public...
I used to drive on it, so that's what it was used for by everybody.
A public school bus can't go down, so...
So I'm going to table this matter. Because I, I, I want to talk to town council. Is that something we can, okay. I'll, I'll see if the town manager will, will give me some time with town council to figure that all out. Okay.
Just, just so you know, I, I got comments from the assistant town manager today about how concerned he was about the roads being blocked. Wayne Taylor.
Yes, and I'm so happy that, I, I think we'll figure it out. I think we'll figure it out. I, I'm loving that we have this assembled group, and we've got enough resources to do that. All right. So Cape Cod Commission, okay. So we have this, we have this, you know, idea of, of really having the mitigation going in a different direction. Right? So we have a transition of, you know, town planners coming up. What do you think our action steps should be to figure out these mitigation options? Do you think we need some additional professional help to do that? Do you think we need some additional professional help to do that? We have, we have a budget for.
All right, just help them.
We, yeah. What do, what do you think? I mean, this is a little bit beyond my capabilities with respect to time to figure this out.
So you're, you're saying?
First, I think.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
The first thing you need to do is find out if this is a DRI. They've got, you've got to, I mean.
That'll be a big deal, yeah.
I don't think it is.
The Cape Cod Commission has not responded to Tom Fadala. This is urgent, isn't it? You have to know that before we continue, but we have a time constraint here. So that's number one.
Okay.
Number two, town council to figure out about the ancient ways.
That's going to be, I think, out of the purview of this.
That's more like a violation, I believe.
But I, but I promise I will talk to town, the town manager and, yeah. I mean, I can follow up on those public comments with the town manager and get a plan.
Looking at another option.
A mitigation.
I, I'm sorry that I didn't have the knowledge to raise it back when.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, it was just, this was a big learning curve for me. Who pays for an independent person to, to look? Now, would LEC, would they do this?
We're not, we're not, no, we're, they're, they're a different kind of engineer. We're not reviewing any work.
Okay, we're, we're looking.
Know what I mean?
To get some.
I, I don't think that 53G applies. What do you think, Amy?
So the only, the only way that 53G would apply is if you wanted to have the mitigation plans peer reviewed. But unfortunately, as the chair pointed out, 53G is only peer reviewed. So they can only review what is presented. They cannot come up with a new plan for you.
So we have a small budget for engineering. Can, can we hire a consultant to figure out, to, to look at all these different mitigation options? Is that allowed?
So, yes, that, that would be allowed. However, I guess, I guess the question is, is, is what the interim town planner presented to the applicant, is that something they're looking at or not? Because if that's not even on the table, then this board has decisions to make based on that. But if they are willing to take some of the mitigation that they're presenting, meaning the bog restoration and I think it was the $110,000, if they're willing to take the 750 plus the 110 and instead put it into an upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant, then that's a different decision for this board. So we have to know if that's, if that's an option before we.
And there was something else too about hooking up another condominium complex.
Correct. And then there was also a, a half an acre donation to the town.
I think Kevin made it clear he's thought about it. And, you know, Kevin Kline is, he's an expert. He's been around for a long time.
So summarize that for us, Tom.
Yeah, because maybe I missed it. I didn't see if it was available, if it's an option or not.
The option is to turn the sand filters that are at the end of the RBC process into a nitrogen filter, which is probably use the same amount of space, but involves a lot of work. And you had a rough cost estimate, I think. Which is better than I was thinking.
And I'm going, running the numbers in my head and it's, I'd have to look at what it would really cost. It is a feasible option, but it's not an easy option. But it is feasible. And a lot depends on the condition of the tanks, because you want to make it, do you have to replace all the steel? Some of the steel, none of it? Or is it?
If you do, you got a problem already.
Yes, but it's, you're, yes and no. Because you're not just, you have to change the footprint. So you have to weld some steel onto the steel. So it has to be in better shape than something that's going to last for another 20 years. You got to make it even better. We can look at the options and I can, and I had actually looked at it a couple of years ago. I just don't remember all the cost estimates.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, is that you'd already looked at it. So you've got some idea what we're talking about.
It is, and it is a feasible option. It is not an inexpensive option, no.
But neither is the cranberry bog, apparently. So it's just a matter of where you put your money for the best benefit. And I'm just troubled by the fact that I've never seen any kind of numbers come out of a cranberry bog, quote, restoration, which means ripping up the cranberry bog and turning it into a swamp. But I've never seen any kind of nitrogen reduction numbers from any of those projects. Whereas that's what we need to be concerned about in Mashpee is the nitrogen load in the base. And we know the treatment plant can make a difference if we can improve its performance. And I was going to ask you, do you do?
It may get it from 5.6 to 4.8.
Do you do recycling in that plant when you get low flows? So, yeah, so you get better numbers.
Yeah, that plant can recycle from just about everywhere. We got a bunch of different options.
Yeah, because that helps too.
All right. So, so, Jack? Would you, would you be willing, would the project proponent be willing to have Kevin look at that?
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Now, it was very quick, it was very quick. There was this mention of maybe hooking up a different area of town into your wastewater treatment facility. Tell me a little bit more about that idea. Is that something that you'd be willing to have Kevin look at?
Comes down to who's going to pay for it.
Well.
Yeah, that, that, my comment was, you know, as a layperson, that is by far more effective. I think, as I've said, I think it's a crime that for 30 years we've been working with the town, asking them to take over the plant.
I don't remember you asking.
Never asked me.
Yeah. Well, maybe you should run for other. You know, I, the first project I worked in here was Stratford Ponds in 1985. And I was assured that the sewer commission was going to have townwide sewer.
Didn't have a sewer commission in 1985.
But it was being formed and you were going to connect all the private plants. None of that ever happened, which is a shame.
Well, just, just so you know, Jack, the, the plan, the official plan, and they're not really following it, was that once we get our own system started, that's, and that's why you're getting talk from Jared. He's talking to you and he's talking to Southport about becoming.
So anyways, I'm, I'm just trying to see if that's a realistic thing to put on the list for mitigation.
We're not going to redesign, you know, sections of the town sewer to connect them. We would certainly make it available and I think we would, I would have to confirm. But as Tom said, it's, you know, the money is fungible. If the town decided that it wanted to take the money that we were going to spend on bog restoration and spend that on extending the sewer system and connecting it, we would try to facilitate that. Again, caveat, Willowbend, the developer here, does not own that plant. But, you know, we have the, the community trust, which does, which has been talking to the town for decades and I have been part of that, about taking it over, I think would, would support that. So the answer is yes. I will say, it's extremely frustrating. We spent two years talking about this and now we're coming up with a completely different proposal, not at all related to the remand order. The one thing I haven't heard, which I had hoped to hear from the board tonight, is why the board will not consider modifying the 850. The board needs a reason. It's, it cannot be arbitrary. And I haven't heard one piece of testimony as to what the environmental impact of these extra bedrooms is that would justify the enforceability of a 30-year-old zoning condition, which relates to the interior of structures, which is outlawed by chapter 48.
It's only bedrooms. This is talking about bedrooms, not the.
You might not hear.
Square footage is what's regulated, regulated under.
So I, I'm just saying, it's frustrating. We will look at it, but please keep in mind, we've been at this for over two years. We're now being asked to completely revamp things.
I'm sorry, I just showed up for the last couple of months.
I wish you were here, I guess.
I wish you were here too.
But we've spent an awful lot of money to get to this point, as, as the board. And I hope there's some appreciation for that because, you know, we think it's a good project.
Thank you.
And to clarify, I'm not looking for any more money. Like you said, the money is fungible. If you're going to spend on one thing, you could just put it aside. It could be used for something better.
I'm, I'm really tending towards keeping Tom on as a special consultant for this. He knows so much about it. Okay, so, um, somebody looked like they wanted to say something. Yeah, okay. Hi.
It's a question. My name's Paul Gommetz. I live in Six Hinnocks Lane, Mashpee, actually part of Willowbend. Back to what, what Jack was just saying. Is there a policy with respect to any development on the number of bedrooms? So another, like in New Seaberry, does New Seaberry have the same condition?
Have you, wait, have you read this special permit? This special permit for this development?
A lot, I, I don't know the details.
Right, like, I think there's very few of us that have. I was one of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, am I asking a question?
I stumbled upon that condition, okay? It's my standard, current standard operating procedure is to ask if all the conditions of a special permit are met before we grant a modification. Right? Because when, when do you, when do you do a checkup of everything? When does the planning board do a check? We don't look at things annually. So I started looking at them when they come to us. It was a very simple question. I never thought in a million years it would have gone this route, okay? But I did. I read every condition and every one of them is like, check, 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 oops. Check, 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 oh. What, we have to go back and talk about this and think about this? And we've learned an awful lot about the jurisdiction of a planning board with respect to bedrooms. But it is in there and it's something that we've identified not in being in compliance and we have to deal with it.
No, I'm, I'm not asking necessarily with respect to Willowbend in particular. As a general rule in Mashpee, any developer developing property, do they have a bedroom restriction, again, specifically does New Seaberry?
I have not read those, I have not read those special permits.
New Seaberry is a 1964 special permit. I mean, like 20 years before this, we hardly had any zoning regulations.
There's a lot of ancient history here.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, sometimes it's a sewer cap.
The answer frankly is no. If there's discussion of bedrooms, it's only in calculating, you know, what kind of wastewater facility, size of wastewater facilities and all.
Would the wastewater be more of a function of bathrooms rather than?
Well, tell that to DEP. They count bedrooms as two people worth of wastewater. And so if you got four bedrooms, they assume you got eight people living in your house and they're all putting out 55 gallons of poop every day.
But, you know, sometimes it's, it's a cover on drainage or some type of infrastructure in the parking lot that's not up to, that's not up to the special permit conditions. It could be anything. It could be anything. So.
It just seems, and I.
I know.
Kudos to all of you for putting up with all of this, but it seems like it's, there's a lot of inconsistency. This is my first meeting coming to.
Yeah, and, and that's why it's a special permit. It's special. It's not right out of the zoning bylaw. It's not by right. It's a special permit. Sometimes there's trees. Peter's here. Sometimes there's trees that we identify that can't be touched, so. All right.
I see a lady in the room that actually wrote the minutes from that meeting where that number was set.
I know. I was probably like, I'm really, you know, living through this again.
Requested the developer, no less.
All right. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to authorize the chair and town council to, to keep this development of a mitigation plan going? Is that allowable?
Yes.
Do they need to take a motion or is it?
It's granted.
So I, I, I would take a motion on that to allow the chair to go forward.
So, babe? Second?
This is, this is to help, help along this process to get a mitigation plan kind of like tweaked or not tweaked? Can I work with the project proponent in the meantime? Yeah. So I'd be working with the town manager, hopefully the, some type of town planner, consultant, the project proponent, maybe town council, to get this kind of, to move this along a little bit for a, a written mitigation plan for us to consider when we get back.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
When I was asked for mitigation, the first thing I said, can we put a price on the bedrooms? It was 12 ounces, four bedrooms, 48 bedrooms. If we could, if we could put like a $10,000 per bedroom or 5,000, that would've got us more money. It would've got us $140,000.
I'm not sure that we can do that.
That doesn't sound like a legal condition. That's just, that's highway robbery.
That's too logical. I know what you mean, but I, but yeah.
It's easier to step up instead of hiring a consultant, you know.
I know. But I think, I think I've, I have enough to move this along so that we can make some serious progress at our next meeting. Is the project proponent available on the third Wednesday of January, which I believe is the 15th?
Yes, yep.
Okay, 7:10?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, and like I said, we will have the Zoom link available. I, I need a mo.
I make a motion, consider the public here until January 17.
15.
15, at 7:10.
Second.
Any discussion? And I'm going to take a roll call vote. All in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Mary Wagon, aye?
Aye.
Dale? And then Rob doesn't vote. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Now, I have a quick question for town council. Okay. So we have a property owner that's here tonight to talk to Ed Pesci, but I can't have Ed Pesci speak. Okay. All right, Ed, we're going to say goodnight to you. Okay, bye-bye.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to triple check because I'm going to have, let's take a quick break and then we'll talk to Peter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
For Peter, there's a, he owns a property that has some, a big rainfall. I'm going to take a recess.
Can I just ask you a quick question? No, fast, but why is Dale sitting in the state of the city?
So we're on, the mic is hot, so I'm, I'll, yeah. And I have to freshen up.
Have you had any case like this? So I do a lot of, I do a lot of 40Bs, a lot of, and 40Bs, we all, we almost always live in bedrooms. And so, I mean, in that context, yes. You know, again, it comes down, this one, you know, also comes down to, the permit was issued in 1977 with one of our vendors. They never, they never appealed a limited vendor. So he can say all of his, whether it's legal to, to a vendor. He should have appealed it. His presentation, he said, whatever kind of deal. But he's not overdoing it. Well, I know he was relying on Don Pinto to speak, you know, to just cut his legs from. Yes, yeah, I guess. That could have been why, but that's not something I would have ever said at the meeting. We're not, you know, we're looking for mitigation. You know, can you just say this?
I'm Allen Blair. I'm a resident of Mashpee, as I'm a jury, as it turns out. I'm a little confused if the access that some people from the public are having to the board members, they get up to speak and then decide they're going to distribute written material. They're actually talking to the board members while they're doing, doing it and the public can't hear what they're saying.
Can't hear.
We can't hear what they're saying.
Yeah, I agree with you. So, so Mary did tell her to, to go back. I, I, you're talking about Wendy Rogers.
Does she have a special privilege here or?
Well, she acts very privileged, always.
There's nothing more aggravating than seeing that. She's distributing the material.
I agree with you. She, I'm going to tell you something factually about that woman. It's a fact. People are scared to death of her because she is a investigative reporter. She will persecute you. Very careful. You heard her say, she's a very dear friend of Terry, the one who spoke positively about Willoughby. She's not. That's just... Tell, tell Mary that, because I think you're right.
I can't. About Willoughby?
It's about procedure. No, no, you can't.
All right, in general terms.
My name is Alan.
Hi. Hi.
Simon's Row. Permanent resident, only residents. I've been to a few meetings, and I've observed a few in line. And I've just, and I've been to hundreds of public meetings around the state prior to that. I've never seen-
At least it's my turn.
-direct access to planning boards in the public sector.
Yeah.
I don't think it's procedural. I'm just wondering what the rules are here and why some people seem privileged and others are not. Usually, somebody has papers to distribute, thinking of to the secretary.
Right.
Distributes it. They don't commit some board members as a distributor of material.
I don't know if you heard me, but I asked him to stop doing that.
But she didn't stop doing it.
And she didn't stop. She's still there. So, how do you, Mike, you support this?
I'll take your, I'll take your, you know, your comments and consideration. When I started this, nobody came to any meetings. Nobody came to any meetings. Things have gotten more and more and more and more heated. And I, I do have to balance.
You have to keep working.
Yes.
And you have, you set the actions here, and enforce it. You set it up for everybody, and she's an outlier. Just kind of excuses. It's not right.
I, I know, but like, Michael Ronha, I so appreciate him. And I know I called him Michael. We shouldn't have done that and been like, hi, come on up. You know, but I so appreciate some of the comments that you've brought in, have saved the day. Okay, so, I'm going to go, we're going to come back into order. And we're going to, we're going to ask Karen Faulkner to come and sit down and-
Just one second, please.
All right, so, anybody have an agenda?
Yes.
All right. So, on our agenda-
Oh, time to grill Pete.
I know.
I'm ready.
I know. All right, so, we're down to board engineer report. So, that whole thing about the Zoom link impacts this. Because he can't report to us because it'd be a violation of open meeting law. Okay? So, I got an email with some, I was on an email thread about your property. It had been after a storm, and I don't know who took the pictures.
I got these pictures from Ed Pesci.
I believe it was, I think I saw them the morning. This was after that big storm we had like a couple of weeks ago. In that, it was someone with a white truck with a town insignia on the side. So, it might have been any sort of town employee. My van's in one of the photos. You can see it there, the black minivan.
And you know, I'm always on that road.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, because I go swimming there all the time. It's really close to my, and Dennis is there too. I'm sure everybody goes down there. It's a beautiful spot.
Sure.
And sometimes I do-
Dennis is still in there. He can't swim.
Yeah, I float.
Sorry.
And sometimes I see, you know, bales of hay or white things out. You know, I saw the pictures, and I don't know if you saw the email I wrote back?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, so, the email I wrote back was, Ed, Ed, parking's a problem. Parking happens off of paved areas in there, and maybe it's compressing the land. And maybe that's why we're seeing so much. So, that's why you're on the agenda today.
Sure, yeah, no, and let me just give you guys a rundown of, I'm Peter, by the way, with Knockabout. So, in March, February, March, I was talking with Evan about repairing the driveway.
Oh, okay.
If you see on the photo there, on the right-hand side of the entranceway, where you can see my minivan, the top of the photo there, you'll see that there's erosion and the asphalt, where the asphalt and the hill meet there, you'll see that there's some erosion. And that's where that washout is coming down at the bottom.
Oh, it's this picture?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, and so, I met with the town engineer on site.
Ed.
I believe, yeah, Ed. And Evan, and I believe Drew was there.
Okay.
And then also-
A conservation agent.
And then Kathy, I believe, the DPW.
Kathy, the director of DPW, okay.
Because last year, there was one or two instances, like, a couple of days ago, there was those really big rains. And we saw a similar sort of result. And so, we said, how, they said, listen, we can't have this washout going down there. We want to recapture this or just make sure that we're not having silt and all that stuff going down to, to catch base in there. And so, the project was going to be worked on in March. And I was working with Evan to schedule kickoff with the town engineer because the town engineer had suggested some solutions. And I had finally got a vendor that could do the work. And then, I never heard back from Evan on the kickoff in spring and summer camp. This hasn't even been-
Oh, okay, okay.
It hasn't been on my radar until the storm.
Right.
And I saw the washout at the bottom, and I was like, oh, shit, excuse me, oh, poop. And so, I wasn't surprised that, that I saw someone down there taking a photo because it was, I, we hadn't had a storm like that since-
Right.
-that caused that level of washout, so.
Since the storm born was brewed.
Exactly. So, for us, this is, I mean, as the business, we can't have our driveway washing out. We have to fix that issue, right? So, this has to be a repair we do. And so, Ed had suggested some, I can't tell you exactly what it was, but I wrote it down. I sent it to the vendor. Stones that recapture the rainwater so that as it's going down, it's almost like a little drainage pit-type thing that then is on the side of that driveway there. So, it's really on my bad for not following up with Evan. And then, I talked to Tom about this. Like, there was no record of it on his side. So, obviously, Tom didn't know this was happening, and I had-
No, every time, see, this was the last project I worked on when we-
That's right. That's right.
And, and every time I go in there, I, I see that, you know, hey, where, where the rhododendrons going? Hey, these people shouldn't be parking there. And I always tell Pete, phew, I'm glad I'm not the town planner anymore. I don't have to enforce this.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we did, we, I remember, and we were kind, we were very lax about the parking requirements. Because you were a startup company, and I think the-
Well, no, we met the parking requirements.
Right, but there were some things that we did not push for in that parking lot.
Sure.
Right? I don't know if you remember that.
Uh, I've slept, but I do remember those many months of working with you guys on it.
I, I just remember being concerned about the parking. But knowing that you were a startup company, we wanted, and it was a spot that had been vacant, and it'd be great for economic development for this, this area. And the area is, I mean, this is my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Other neighborhoods have, you know, but this is my neighborhood. And it's really kind of developing nicely with some options of, like, I don't have to travel to, to go get a beer.
This is Main Street, that's about all.
Right, it's Main Street, right? But we, we did say, you know, we will look at those, we'll look at that in the future. Well, I think the future is here. I think the town's been super creative, you know, in how, how your overflow parking is handled. You know what I mean? But that cross, we have to do something about that crosswalk. I, that crosswalk is, is really tight, and-
Which crosswalk are you talking about?
So, when people, the overflow parking from this business parks behind the archive building.
At Veterans Park over here.
Right? So, that beautiful new parking lot is used for overflow parking. It's all, it's all for the beach, too.
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong. I mean, there's other people that use it. But when there's like a big gathering, I remember like Oktoberfest, you know, when it's at their peak events.
It's usually also the, when the beach is at its peak as well. So, in the summertime, we were actually having to ask people to move their car because people show up with grills and kayaks and park in our parking lot at 7:00 in the morning.
I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, it's been, that's why we had to put up the towing signs and everything like that.
Oh.
Every day, we were showing up on Saturday and Sunday morning. We'd get there at 9:00 AM. There'd already be 15 or 20 cars in the parking lot.
With no beach sticker, huh?
Well, they would park at our parking lot because they didn't have a beach sticker. So, then we had to ask them, hey, you got to go park at Veterans Park. You can't park here at our private establishment.
Because some of the signs I didn't understand.
Well, that's, we wanted to post like, hey-
This one says, no beach parking, and I'm like-
Yeah, you can't, it was a big issue, you know? We, we'd show up and the parking lot would be full of people that were down, they're not from the town of Mashpee or don't have Mashpee's beach stickers.
Oh, they didn't buy a beach sticker, right, okay.
Yeah, whatever it was, and so, hey, just park down there. So, a lot of those people you'll see on the busiest days are also crossing to go to that beach. You know, the families, anything like that, so.
Yes, so, like, something, and, and that's, that's the kind of spot that people are traveling super fast. And they're, they're not from around here, and they're coming down this curve. And then they have a straight path, and it's downhill, and they can go quickly. And that's right where the crosswalk is. So, it's something, there's some, we need some improvement there.
What do you think you could do? Because that's, that crosswalk is there because Lake Avenue is there. I mean, you know, there's no other place to put the side, the crosswalk.
No, I don't want to move the crosswalk. I want to make it more visible. I think it needs one of those flashing lights when people are crossing.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
Because the big problem is, is it's not really so much speed as you're right before, if coming from Town Hall, you're going over the crest of a hill where you can't see that sidewalk until you're right on top of it.
No, I know, and like, Lake Avenue-
Unless you know it's there, you don't really know that people might be there.
Right, right. Are they doing work on that bridge?
They were, they were doing some sort of clearing along the edge of the pond.
Which has helped out.
The bridge, that's on the pond.
Okay, so the-
They may even turn that into a swamp.
So, that road is not going to get touched?
They just paved that whole road, too.
Right, okay.
You know, like, that was the summer they paved it.
Well, they were doing borings.
I know that they-
The lane was shut, and they were doing borings.
It was in the middle of June or, in the middle of July, August, they'd shut down 1:30 on us. You know, like, a couple of days here and there. It was like, people couldn't even get to the beach or the, the business, so.
Yes, yep, all right.
But I also understood, because that was kind of crazy, because like, the sewer was coming down there at some point.
Yeah.
Well, those borings may have been the planning for phase two of the-
Yeah, they just redid the whole road. They paved the whole road, and then now they're going to, I understood you can't cut up that road for five years or something like that when you do a new asphalt.
No, it's not state-funded, so.
Okay. That's, I just talked to some of the workers down there, you know what I mean, so.
Kathleen upset.
No, no, listen, I mean, if, we'd always want to try and-
I didn't know. I didn't know it was going to, so, right, so, a lot of people, a lot of your patrons, they're parking on places that were supposed to kept, be kept as landscaping.
Sure, yeah, dirt.
So, we need to, we need to figure that out.
Sure.
You know, I-
I have a solution.
You do?
A mutually beneficial solution.
Okay.
You know, the problem that Knockabout has is been incredibly successful. All right, I mean, and, you know, that's what's, and, and then, and then the DPW put no parking signs on Lake Avenue, so people couldn't park there. And then they can't park at the town beach. So, I mean, people have been parking where the landscaping, you know, was supposed to be. So, I, I mentioned this to Pete for the meeting, and may I bring it up?
Listen, yeah.
I brought up the subject of, we know that people are parking right on, right on this dirt here, you know? Bunch of cars there. You go up on the top of the hill where it used to be a ring of rhododendrons. There are nothing but cars in there. And my suggestion was going to be, and this is all dependent on Pete's money supply, is, is why don't we take those areas and actually pave them as formal parking spaces with a proper drainage system? That way, he could take care of, you know, provide and give them maybe 15 more parking spaces for the customers that end up having to hike all over the place, or, you know, or-
Well, that was one of the reasons to Ed.
Park on something decent.
Was with, with Ed, with my vendor had said, hey, what about these three or four other ideas?
Yes.
Based on what Ed had recommended.
Yes.
You know, and so, that was one of the reasons, was hey, before we do anything, like, here's a guy that's going to do the work. Ed, can you talk to him?
Yes, okay, good.
So, you guys can connect on what you want the engineering solution to be. You know, for me, I don't want to, is that raining?
It's raining. Here we go.
Exactly. I don't want this driveway washing out.
Not at all.
I don't want the driveway washing out. That's not, I need people to drive up to the building so they can actually go to the business.
And the other thing is, you know, cars, the old cars, maybe not the new electric ones, but they drip oil.
Yeah.
It goes right on that soil.
That's why you don't do pervious parking. It's got to be impervious, directed to a rain garden.
And that, that's, that's the water that we're trying to clean, right? So, so, you're going to keep working with Ed?
Well, yeah, I, basically, what I, when I saw this note from Tom, I said, hey, listen, here's, I was working with Evan. You guys must have got lost in translation when he left. I totally forgot about it. We're wanting to, we want to fix the project, right? We got, that's got to happen. And I said, can I get a direct line or a schedule with Ed?
He's in Florida, so.
All right.
So, that's, that's, I mean, whoever, whoever I need to talk to.
All right, now, we have to pay Ed for this work.
Well, it literally could just be a phone call with my vendor in there.
No, no, this is going to be more than that. So, because we, we really, so, can I, can I talk to town manager about paying for some hours for Ed?
Yeah.
Is there a motion in a second?
What would Ed be doing?
Ed will be guiding this, this work. He, he would, he can't-
I'm suggesting a whole different work.
Just like the last meeting.
Even better.
Yeah, so, I'm depending if I'm going to have to pay Ed.
Well, I think we need an engineer on this.
Well, he had, he had suggested a solution. So, if we, my vendor then had some adjustments to it, not to say changing it, but based on looking at what the rain was doing, he was saying, hey, this is what we're seeing. Can we do this plus this? So, that was the conversation that I was trying to set up with-
So, right, so we have to, so somebody has to pay Ed.
Filling this arid area with stone and-
You're not going to pay Ed.
The surfaces.
Right?
I'm, I'm paying, I'm paying to get this work done. That's what I'm trying to do. So, that's what I'm just trying to figure out.
This board can, has a little budget.
Sure.
Just like DeGrasse, remember DeGrasse neighborhood that was just like-
Yeah, Ed had, Ed had already been part of this conversation. I met with Ed and Concom, excuse me, the Concom people and the DPW people to go over the plan. This was Ed's suggestion, so, before I started the work, I said, Ed, here's this guy that's doing the work. You know, can we talk?
So, what I'm looking for is a motion in a second to talk to town manager to make sure that Ed is paid for this work.
Like work that already happened or work that's going to have to happen or Ed doesn't work?
Is happening. See, normally, what would happen is, like, this would be an application to us. The fees are, for Ed, are paid by the applicant. But in this case, the planning board, I think, should offer our engineer to help out with this project so it comes out the way we want it to.
All right, first of all, Ed already-
This guy pays property taxes, so, I mean, I'm happy with-
Ed already gave a couple of suggestions.
Yeah.
Tom gave a suggestion. So, is it up to the applicant to say, I like Ed's suggestion?
Take a suggestion.
I can, here's the thing, I can, I can just tell the guy to start doing the work based on what Ed's plan was, what he gave me, which is fine.
Who's paid Ed thus far?
This happened, Ed came out with Evan.
He just came out?
This was before.
This was when Evan was-
He came out on his own, at Evan's request, so who knows?
Evan, Evan had brought him out with the Concom and the other folks. So, all, all I was trying to do was say, hey, here's what he's saying. um, say, hey, here's what he's saying. In addition to what you want to do, here's his idea. Is this good to go? And then I was, we're gonna send a follow-up email saying this is the work. And so that never happened. That last step never.
Right, and that's just the driveway only? Okay.
That's the, the, the washout along the sides that you see is basically adjusting it so that that can reclaim the water, stop the erosion, and then also adjusting so that the water's flowing differently and not down.
It's like a French drain.
Essentially, essentially, that's what he recommend.
That's what he recommends, the French drain. You.
Okay.
Circulate the water.
The water still has to go somewhere. It's going downhill. It has to end up somewhere.
Something has to do, has to be done with the parking, cause.
Let me ask a question. How many parking spaces do you think you need? You know, when you look at the overall picture, when people come, when it gets crowded? What's the maximum you could get out of that? Have you figured that out?
Maximum I could get, I, I have not figured that out. Um, you know, I, I think for us, like right now, there's probably tonight, there's seven or eight cars in the parking lot. You know what I mean? So it's really those.
There were none last night except mine.
Yeah, so it's like, so what we need is like, that, that's why we love this parking lot over here because it's a safe, there's a crosswalk, there's a sidewalk. And it's public parking, so if we're having a, a day where people wanna come on a busy summer day, you know, um, obviously more parking on site would be great. So if that's something that we can explore, I'm totally open to that.
We need to explore.
Sure.
Well, you know what?
Cause, cause I mean, I'm, I'm down there a lot. And, um, the, it's more than just, you know, people are, people have gotten used to parking.
I don't disagree with you at all.
On the dirt.
People will literally drive up and park in those areas when they're not, when there's empty asphalt spaces.
Yes, yes. And that's, that, for the quality of that water right there, that has to stop. So we either need to.
Drainage and then we need to figure out some way of, um.
Either stop people from parking on the ground, which is what I would love to see? Or you follow what, what Tom is saying is to install more parking.
Okay, and so what would the process be to explore that option with?
Does he have, does, is that a change to this special permit?
I gotta be changed to special permit site plan, but, um, here's what I'm thinking since I'm so invested in this, uh, operation. I could, um, uh, print out a couple copies of the site plan as it was approved and, uh, head over to Knockabout and, uh, you know, we could check things out and I could do some sketches, you know?
That's great.
Nobody had to pay me for that.
Yeah, if Tom wants to come over and give his advice on how we could lay out.
Free beers, you know? That's my pay.
I think we should all go.
We have root beer, we have mocktails, we have plenty of non-alcoholic options as well.
Pizza's not bad either.
And, and I'm gonna give you another little bit of, and I've been meaning to drop in and see you or your lovely wife and when you go down to the pond, right? You can see your storage pod, right? So we need to make sure that you can store stuff there.
Yeah.
But I think our intention was for that to be natural.
Okay.
It just, um.
Yeah, that just showed up. That wasn't on the approved plan.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a temporary storage.
The gate down there, it's not very pleasant to look at. The, there's other things on the site that, that aren't pleasant, but those are like on wheels, so we, we need to either screen them or move them. I know you have problem, like, um, but when you go into your parking lot, I don't think you notice it. But take a drive down as though.
I go down all the time, yeah.
And you, and you can see it right up on the hill. And I remember David Weed, remember he was on the board?
Yep, of course.
They were, they were.
He's the one who went on telling which trees to save, yeah.
Remember how sensitive he was to maintaining the nat, the nature of that spot?
I mean, we can for sure, so that, just to give you some background of why we had to get that is because, um, we didn't have any room to store our brewing supplies. That's because we were running out, running out of space in our basement. So things have changed in the beer world where we don't necessarily need that storage anymore. So we can either screen it or I can figure out a way to get rid of it.
Yeah.
You know, so that could be something we could look at as well, you know?
You know, while, while we're beating up on you, Pete, you know, neither of those, neither of those outdoor bar structures were part of your permit either.
Yeah, those, but those are all temporary. We can take those, there's no, they're all just built.
Some of them, I think you, some of them you came back for a modification.
Yeah, yeah.
You did? Oh, okay, I didn't know about that.
Cause I, I always check with Dennis first. And he's like, oh, no, 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 there's some things that you, um.
Oh, Charlie was out there a bunch of times before he retired, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, if you guys have things you, we wanna work on, like, I just, from a business operative point of view, I just need to start planning budgetarily, how things work. You know, so that's what I need to understand. There's a number that I have that, uh, based on Ed's suggestion on fixing that washout. I have that number, I have that plan that's been allocated in my operating budget or my capital improvement budget. So I, I have that plan. Now, if we're gonna do other things, I just need to understand better what they are and what they're gonna cost so that I can actually plan to pay for them.
Do you wanna go out with Tom?
Yeah, I'll go out with Tom.
Alright.
Oh, yeah. You can have part of my first round of beers.
So Dennis, I think we should have Dennis, and you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, good. So Rob, what's going on?
Someday when it's not raining, where we can walk around and see what's level and what's not and do those sketches, yeah.
Dennis, maybe you could, you could clarify things, but aside from the original special permit that took a, um, a, a non-operating existing restaurant, the Flune Restaurant?
Yep.
Well, no, the Flune was long gone.
Yeah, 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 but I mean.
Two other restaurants in between.
Oh, well, okay, well, the building was the same, right?
Yeah, basically.
To take the existing building and turn it into what you've turned it into, which I frequent, on, on occasion. The premise on, on establishing your, uh, uh, property was, gee, there's twenty-one existing spaces, parking spaces, and twenty-one parking spaces that are paved, impervious. There was in the special permit to maintain those twenty-one parking spaces and to have a seat count of forty-two.
Yep.
Seats. Two, two person per car. Since the per, and, and then there was other conditions of, uh, of landscaping and, and grading and stuff. But the parking was twenty-one with forty-two seats. In the year since you operated successfully, it has mushroomed to a greater, greater, greater enterprise.
Yep.
Yeah, the outdoor picnic tables probably have.
With no, uh, allotment for runoff, parking, impervious or otherwise. And I think a engineering review of the current usage and the potential usage would be well in order, well overdue, I would say.
So what do you, what do you mean by an engineering review?
Well.
Like, we can easily go out there and count the new, you know, the number of seats that are out there now.
Okay, if, if the, uh, let's say, if the current, uh, property uses twice as many parking spaces, for, let's say forty. What, what is the load, the rain load, you know, impervious load? What do you need for catch basins? What do you need for that? That's the engineering.
Well, that's a design, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that's a design.
You gotta start with an idea.
Okay, so, I mean, so, but somewhere along the line, somebody like, uh, Pete, would have to say, yeah, we're anticipating a maximum load in the summer Oktoberfest or whatever, fifty cars parked there, probably a hundred people there. That came, came out of those cars. And probably in the public parking lot, another fifty or whatever cars. But the impervious, uh, ground area covered, the amount of, uh, expected rain in the hundred year storm or whatever storm is the condition that you'd need to meet. What is the runoff, stormwater runoff solution for your capacity that you want to maintain? It is certainly far more than twenty-one paved parking spaces.
Correct, yeah, people are using the dirt to park on them. Yep, so there's.
So, somebody has to say, this is what we're expecting. Here's our design to accommodate all of the.
It sounds like that's, Tom can help start that conversation to.
And, and, yeah, I mean, that would be, it would be easy to figure out how many spaces you could fill on the property, but in terms of expecting a cut, a, a number of customers, I mean, the property is only so large, you know? I mean, it can't get much bigger with the parking other than the areas where they've been parking and the ground.
It sounds like the, the, the challenge to us or the, the directive is to A, review what Ed had done, asked us to do on the, the cleaning up the edge that's falling down. Meet with Tom and Dennis on site to look at Tom's ideas.
Hey Dennis, you wanna do the, uh, the polar plunge there on the, what is it, January first? Meet you there.
Yeah, so, right, so they're gonna come on the site.
Come, we'll walk around, we'll, we'll see what the ideas are.
With the theme of, you know, keeping it as natural as possible, right?
Yep.
And then.
And then what I can do is I can then fall, or Tom or Dennis and I can follow up however is appropriate after we meet this week or next, whatever works for your guys' schedule. To say, here's what the ideas are from a parking overflow rain solution.
Awesome. It, 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 it's a, it's a sweet spot.
Yeah.
You know, it's a sweet spot and, uh.
I'm gonna guarantee you though, that, uh, on that site, there'll never be enough parking to handle a number of people that wanna go there.
No, that's not what I'm asking for.
You know, they'll still have to hike to the other places.
You know, that, that's not what I'm saying. I.
Max what he could get on site.
Cause it's so popular on certain dates in the summer and it, it's just doing great.
Yep.
But we can't, what I'm asking for is to, is keep the nature as possible as possible and figure out a solution so that people aren't parking on the dirt. And it, it, it might mean some type of curb. I, I don't know, you guys.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna need, you're gonna need some type of curbing to control the runoff for sure.
You, you guys are the brainiacs. You will, you will figure it out, but, um.
Landscaping, curbing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, it, it is a sweet spot. And I just remember David, you know, like, um, I, I know that I, I'm sure he wanted, um, you know, to take that back to nature, but it's, I knew he couldn't. You know, cause it had already been developed.
I mean, so, those are all great ideas, but, um.
It's really not.
Pete here to fix the driveway. Does he need anything else from us to?
He's gonna go forward with the driveway.
As long, as long as, as long as I'm good to move forward with the driveway repair.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
I'll meet with Dennis and Tom.
About.
Cause right now I'm waiting for my vendor to tell me the start date on the driveway repair. So when I, when I got this information on Friday afternoon and then, you know, I said, hey, listen, obviously we gotta set the start date.
And I didn't know that, that you had already been working with Ed and Evan.
And, and just so you know, I got told by, uh, um, Drew Monday that, uh, he was gonna be getting a violation notice from the Con's Com. So there's a little pressure on him there. Uh, time pressure, unfortunately.
He doesn't need any more pressure, Pete.
Listen, we just wanna do the right thing, so.
Yeah, Pete, you just, you just call up Peter and he says, sure. I mean, there's, there's no need, but anyways.
You have that outdoor seating that does pretty good in the summer.
Yes, sir.
So when you put more parking, you gotta lose some of that, or?
I'm not sure. It depends on kinda what we kinda.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, they're all, they're, those are all up, up the hill area. I don't think.
It's sweet because you, you can sit up there and the band is right there and it's just.
I think it's using the area that's in front of the building currently that has the paved stuff and figuring out.
I think there's a little potential there.
Yeah.
You know, you gave, you gave me a.
Don't cut down any trees, thank you.
No.
Stop the like.
Sounds good.
Let's think of something else.
Mary, you gave me a, a, a good justification thought, you know, there used to be rhododendrons there and all that landscaping and all they were supposed to keep. Hey, wait a second, we wanna naturalize this place. Rhododendrons aren't usually there naturally, so I have to get rid of the rhododendrons and put some natural asphalt there.
Alright, let's move on.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so I will email Tom and Dennis.
Get, get hold of me.
Alright, and then. Um, tell you what, uh, I'm only, Friday is my only, I'm not here tomorrow, I'm only here Friday, so use my home email, which is tomfodall@comcast.net.
And at Tom, just email me and, with me.
Yeah, I got.
You guys just let me know, I'm here all through the holidays, so if it's a good day.
That's great, and I think we should start a little Route 130 Business Association.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I appreciate you guys.
Pizza place, you've got pickleball coming in.
Oh, right.
Got some good stuff.
We got a new toy store.
A new toy store, I gotta go, I gotta go, so, yeah. Oh, you beat me. Thank you, Peter.
He just got a permit today for his sign from the historical commission. Yeah, you were there, but you didn't collect the $200 application fee.
I'm gonna email Tom right now just so that it's, the ball's rolling to get your guys' schedule.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
What are you gonna email me about?
Just to remind.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, send me, you know, what's good for you, scheduled time.
Alright, so I think I'm gonna table, um, the housing production plan.
Yeah.
Okay, raise and replace, I got some materials.
I think we should table that.
No, 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 I'm just gonna pass out these materials. So, um, there's something I found online, uh, from the Pompaneset, um, something from 2020 from the Pompaneset Beach Association. The part of the bylaw that has to do with the Pompaneset Overlay District and some maps. These maps are really
Everything.
Um, low, um. They're, they're not good quality. I don't know what, how to do that, but, um.
Do they list V, A, O, and A and all that on it?
Yeah. But it's not, this is about the raise and replace. It's your library, your reading library.
Yeah. I like the fireplace on Christmas Eve.
So I think I have the maps that we want. They're just really low resolution, so I gotta, I gotta figure out how to get better resolution maps. Cause these are just like screenshots. You know, I don't have the right, um, but it, it's about Pompaneset. Tom, do you want these or?
Absolutely. I love maps.
Well, these, this, I'm embarrassed to even give these to you.
Why?
Because this is all about this, it's the Pompaneset Overlay District, it's the flood map, it's the flood area over the.
Oh, you printed out the flood zones?
I've been going down the, I go down the beach every night, at nine thirty.
So it's something to, like this one, the one with the red, like I'd like that with all the streets. Do you know what I mean? Like, I can't, sorry. And then this is just an overlay from the FEMA mapper. But it's so, cause I had to do a screenshot, it's so low resolution, so. It's just a star. So there's that. That's all about raise and replace, um. And I, um, I, I'll give real quick, well, let's just real quick do board meeting committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, they're working on the, um, uh, the zero, the Vision Zero, and I have got to call them about comments on the LCP. And I haven't done that. I will do that. Charter Review Committee meets next, uh, January eighth, it's that. So we meet the fifteenth, I think it's the thirteenth, January, uh, thirteenth. John Miller has stepped down as the Chair of the Committee. And what we're gonna do is, we have an awful lot of work to do and we don't have consensus on all of it, so the things that we have consensus on, consensus on, we're bringing to town meeting. Plus, one more discussion about bulletin boards. Trying to get the town to be required to post the agendas on the website. So.
Well, they do post them on the bulletin boards. You're, I mean, and every time I get a planning board agenda, um, it's either Karen or the Selectmen's Office that puts it on the website.
Yep, yep. So there's the definition of the bulletin board for the charter, there's the definition of a bulletin board for open meeting law. Um, they can be different, um, and.
Are they different?
They can be.
Alright, but I mean, cause we have two bulletin boards, one in the front of Town Hall and one in the back of Town.
Right, the open space meeting bulletin board is the rear of the building outside, that has 24/7 access. The bulletin board in the, in the hallway is not the open meeting law bulletin board because it's not op, it's not accessible 24/7.
Oh.
A lot, but, but she does a good job putting them up there. It's, you know, now, a lot of.
I could swear they used to have, in their old days, they used to have a bulletin board that was out like on the.
Yes, you're right. That, that may have been the 24/7, but it, I, I don't know what happened to it. A lot of towns use their website as the open meeting law 24/7 bulletin board. Most of them do that.
I thought there was, it had to be a physical bulletin board.
Nope, they ruled that it did not have to be, um, and that.
People that don't have a computer, they're left out of the, the notice these days, huh?
Far, far more people would see the, the notices if they were on the website. Trust me.
Yeah, but who goes, who goes onto the website, you know, looking?
Every, people do. Bye, happy holidays.
Did you send an email?
Just sent it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, I, I, I vehemently disagree with you, Tom. Going, going 24/7 to that back bulletin board, it's dark at night. It's isolated, not well lit. Yeah, but people, people Google. So anyways, that's what's going on with the Charter Review. Community Preservation meets tomorrow.
Board, they, you want another, another outdoor one should be put someplace in town, you know, whether it's Mashpee Commons or.
In the front, well lit.
Receiver, you know?
She can keep, that, that bulletin board in the back can always be the open meeting law bulletin board.
Yeah.
Yep.
But you said there needs to be two.
So in the Charter, the, under definitions, it has nothing to do with open meeting law. They define bulletin boards, okay? And in there, it says town meeting, town agendas, um, sorry, the agendas of town committee meetings or, you know, board meetings and committee meetings and board meetings have to be on the town bulletin board. The town bulletin board in the Charter. The town bulletin board in the charter can ha, can be defined as more than one place. The open meeting law bulletin board cannot. You have to pick one place and one place only and report it to the attorney general.
Not two?
No.
I wish that there had to be two.
Nope. So did not.
You have one up in the back here.
So did I, but I, I talked to Amy, um, from town council, I, I talked to her about this. The charter, you can define the bulletin board as more than one spot. And that's how, that's the only way we would be, we would be able to force all agendas to be on the website, is to put it in the charter. So that's, now that I've confused the whole town, okay. But, that's, that's one thing, that's the only thing we don't have consensus on that will probably be on the May warrant. Heaven help us.
What about the appointment of Debbie Damon?
Um, the items about whether, uh, positions are elected or appointed, there's no consensus. If that comes up, that would be in the fall. Plus, right, there's an election for that seat. Town elections are in May, we don't wanna be messing around with that stuff.
Right.
While we're in the election, we don't want it to be an election issue.
It's a, for a one-year term.
So, we're, we're, but, but I
Three-year terms, don't touch with it.
Right, and, and that, that's what the planning board has said, and I am your representative, and even though I disagree with you personally, I am representing you what you, what you feel. You all agree on that.
I think everybody should be elected like it used to be.
Yeah.
Including town planner?
Well, town planner was never elected, that's staff, I'm talking about the boards. Board of Health needs to be elected, assessors, you know, sewer commissioners.
Well, most of the people that responded to the survey agree with you.
Oh, so have you changed anything? Are you proposing to make them elected now?
We don't have consensus on that, so we're not bringing that to May town meeting. If it comes up, it'll be in fall.
Didn't you say that you don't have the authority either, you have to set up an actual charter commission?
An elected charter commission is the only one that can, that can recommend, recommend changes to town meeting, uh, the town manager's duties and responsibilities and how they're chosen and all that stuff, and the select board. You need an elected commission to do that.
What would you change about it?
Every, doesn't matter, everything else is up, it can be recommended by a committee or
An unelected committee, huh?
Yeah, or
Decide on whether people should be elected, I like that, I don't like that.
Or
Neither.
A ten-person citizens petition.
Uh, Community Preservation, Preservation Committee.
Oh, yeah, that's tomorrow night, and we have four, four out of the six, um, applications to look at, um, yeah.
All right.
What do you mean, are you, have you eliminated two of them?
We already heard from, uh, the historical commission for the, uh, CHOPCHAC.
All right.
They want money to work up a feasibility plan, uh, the, and study. There's this beautiful, I think it's beautiful, um, uh, bog house on there, I think it's pretty. And instead of demolishing it, uh, bringing it to someplace like here, like up in this, on Route 130, um, so that
After we destroy all the cranberry bogs, we're gonna bring a bog house over here to remind us, we used to have cranberry bogs all over town. It was a going industry.
And the Boys and Girls Club, um, asked for some money to fix their basketball court.
All right.
Which is, which is accessible to the public on, um, weekends, um, and I
So, old farts like me can go to the Boys and Girls Club and
And they're gonna, look, they're gonna stripe it for pickleball. So guess what, that will, that court will start getting used like every hour, um
So we can't play basketball anymore.
We do both.
You gotta, you gotta beat them.
Same time?
You gotta beat them, you gotta beat them over there. So that's what's going on with that, and then there's four other ones, one's a boat, one's the, the storm water management at a boat ramp, ancient cemeteries, a playground at Leclerc Village, and something else, sorry, don't have my stuff with me. Oh, and I, the report
Boat ramp that shouldn't be built.
Right.
Santuit Pond, we just limited the horsepower to ten horsepower, and then we're gonna build a giant concrete boat ramp to the, the most polluted pond in town that, you know,
Don't make sense.
Stir up the bottom and it's a disaster.
Good point.
It's a total joke.
There was, there was, um, a presentation to the select board this Monday, right? They meet Mondays.
I mean, it's a nice boat ramp.
On the, the Wakeby, well, this, the storm water management would be at the state boat ramp going into Mashpee Pond.
That isn't, that, I told you last time, why would the town spend $350,000 on a state property?
Okay.
The state's the one with the money in the first place, let them pay for their own ramp.
Now, um
That should not be
UMass Dartmouth, Ed Eichner, reported
Yeah.
To the town
Yeah.
On the report for the Mashpee Wakeby
I watched it.
Pond.
Yeah.
Watch it. It was excellent, the, um, it, it's on the, right now, it's on the, uh, web, uh, the town's front webpage, the link to the report.
Yeah, yeah, I have it, I might look at it.
It's very interesting, um, he says
Recommends alum treatment.
Alum treatment, the, 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 the source of, right now, that's what he's, he says, that's the first thing you do. Alum and Wakeby Pond, cause the phosphorus is coming wherever, whatever the, you know, the, the in and out of the phosphorus, the, the phosphorus
Sedimentation is the phosphorus
Source. Right, and that's causing the bloom. So he wants us to do the alum treatment and Wakeby Pond, and then see what happens.
It's got a beautiful picture in their report of a nice green pond, which happens to be the sandwich part of the pond, cause you can see the cranberry bog house in the back of it that's polluting the pond with the
Twenty-one million dollars?
Yeah, uh, yeah, and it was interesting because
That's it.
That, there was a conversation about dredging the pond, but it was interesting that the professor who came to talk to us, the scientist that came to talk to us, was talking about how you're always gonna have phosphorus in the sediments because animals die and they go to the bottom, and that's how it gets built up, it's not like somebody came and
But, but a lot, like Santuit Pond is a victim of being surrounded by cranberry bogs for a hundred years and, uh,
Yeah, he, he
All that phosphorus off the bogs caused the growth of those algae that died.
That's Santuit.
Yeah.
But this, he thinks, he thinks with the alum treatments, um
They're helping, uh
To see how it, how it, how it goes.
And, well, one big thing you didn't mention is that the majority of the, the phosphorus in Mashpee Pond is coming from Wakeby Pond.
Right, he did mention that, yeah.
That's why he's doing Wakeby Pond first, because if you clean that up, then probably Mashpee Pond won't have a problem because you've already got rid of the, the main source of the, the phosphorus.
Yep, um, and then he did, he did say that, uh, the storm water from, uh, the storm water coming into the pond
Was nothing.
Was nothing.
Yeah, same thing with fertilizer.
Here's the problem, you have work on that boat ramp, right?
Yeah.
That would manage the storm water for 350,000, you have an alum treatment that's gonna cost 800,000. I'm kind of like, now I'm like, now the budget is, is, is killing me, that decision about the boat ramp is hurting me.
So alum was the main, alum was the main recommendation, and then what was the second one?
The, it, his
Nothing even close.
Yeah, his first recommendation was ma, was Wakeby.
Yep.
Continue testing. Increase testing, cause he said you're gonna need it, right? See how that goes, the second step is alum in Mashpee Pond. So if the alum in
If it's successful in Wakeby.
If it's successful in Wakeby
Well, then you may not need, that's when you re, you keep measuring things in Mashpee Pond, because you may not even need the alum, or maybe a smaller treatment.
You might need it.
Yeah.
And then he starts talking, then he was like, well, then you start thinking about other things like the treatment plant up top.
That's insane.
Now
It's a total waste of money.
The conversation then went to the graph where during the non-summer months, 65% of the phosphorus that's coming into the pond is from septic systems. But in the summer months, when the, the, the graph was there
Yeah, but here's a, here's the thing, those septic systems are not in Mashpee, they're in Sandwich. The vast majority of those septic, it's about 15 septic systems in Mashpee affecting Wakeby Pond, but the whole northwest corner of the pond is sandwiched, high density development, and you saw there was a big chump coming from the cranberry bog, spelled out in the, the red quarter there, and there's a 40B development that's wrapped around those cranberry bogs within 300 feet, so their phosphorus is going into the bog, which is then sending it into Wakeby Pond. But that's all in Sandwich, we can't do a thing about that unless we get Dennis, you know, sewer, so, that, that and they wanna put that treatment plant on chapter, chapter 97, open space, which was created by a cluster subdivision, the planning board, which automatically makes it chapter 97. So they can't put a treatment plant where he wants to put it, he keeps saying, well, you know, conservation restriction is only good for 30 years. Doesn't matter, the way it was created through a cluster subdivision preserves it forever. You don't need a separate conservation restriction. So, he thinks he's got a site, but he doesn't. And I've told him that.
Gonna be very interesting, so I'm
Yeah, well
Hoping the alum works, we don't have to do anything else.
Well, he's going ahead with his spending a good chunk of money on that crazy sewer plant that we don't need behind that, cause that didn't have to go to town meeting, they took that out of Cape Cod Commission nitrogen mitigation funds. What are you spending up there?
It, it, it's a good report, it, it really is, and it really
Oh, yeah.
Helps understand so that we can make
Yeah.
The best decisions going forward.
I, I was disappointed in, uh, he, he made a great presentation, it was very clear what we should do, and then we got a bunch of selectmen's coming up with their own ideas and get the whole thing confused, and I don't know, people coming out of the meeting, you know, actually remembered what the real report said.
Right.
Sorry, selectmen.
Well, that's what we paid, we paid for the advice of, you know, a professor who does this all the time, so, um, design review.
No meeting.
Plan review. No, no meeting, okay, environmental oversight committee.
No meeting.
Okay, so, um
Don't forget me?
Nope, I have something. So anyways, I ta, I talked to Rodney about, um, when the new town planner comes to kind of prioritize stuff. Evan was going to a lot of different meetings, God love him, right? But sometimes I felt like our stuff wasn't getting done, um, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can get that open space.
We don't make the town planner community director.
Yeah.
Right, also, you know, I know economic development is, is part of planning, but, you know, I don't, I don't want them to get pulled away, like, he was pulled away and a lot, like, I would go to meetings and he was there, I'm like, what do you, you know? So, I think we need to, I think the open, the update to the open space and rec plan is a priority. I think some bylaw changes are, is an up, is a priority, I think the LCP is a priority.
By the way, I
Anything else? Wait.
Did you mention the open space plan?
Yes.
There, the town is advertising for somebody to do the open space plan.
Good.
Cause I got a call from a guy named Jeff Thibodeau today that used to work for Mark Robinson, and, uh, he was looking into putting in a bid for that.
Oh, that's excellent news.
Yeah.
That's excellent news.
And I told him, it's perfect the way it is, just update a little bit.
Yes, exactly, it just needs to be updated, well, but the state now has different, since it's been done, it has
No, 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 it's just, the, the only issue is, you gotta get, do another round of, round of, uh, of, uh, public, um, what you wanna call it, public input.
Yep.
Um, which, really disappointing because when you're getting input on the comprehensive plan, there should have been a lot more questions about open space that could have stood for the open space plan public input. And that's what we did, you know, last, way back when we did the comprehensive plan, it had a whole questionnaire, it actually went out in 1992, I think, and, uh, you know, tons of questions, and we got excellent response, uh, and, uh, it was, that was the basis for a lot of stuff.
Okay, Historic District Commission.
We had a meeting.
Hey!
Yes, we did.
We approved this talk, the sign for the toy store.
I like the sign.
Yes, but
Good job.
But the, but the, the commit, the
Oh.
That's temporary.
Oh.
The real ones, like that, but then it had, on the top of it, like toy boxes, with a beer and, um, I forget that
A beer?
A little teddy bear.
Little teddy bear coming out of it.
Bear, yeah, I know, I gave you the pictures.
Oh, big dog, yeah.
Yeah.
A beer.
It's really nice, it's all
I gotta say, I'm still really upset that the Historic District Commission started the meeting that I was supposed to start and finish the meeting and approve the project before, before I even got to the meeting, cause I was tied up with the, the Willabon stuff and and they forgot to collect the $200 application fee, now I gotta chase the guy down for $200 bucks.
When do you think?
There will be more coming, by the way, there's, there'll be further meetings, the, uh, town, actually, who's the applicant, um, through GHD, there, you're gonna have Historic District Commission looking at two pump stations, one right next to the driveway at town hall here, and the other one further down near Santuit Road, I think. There's Sam's
When do you think that, uh, evergreen circle pickleball application will be back to us?
Never know with the commission.
All right.
I mean, it's at the Cape Cod Commission, I'm not su, the guy, the guy that's doing it, Bill Russell, um, he was in town hall today, uh, and he was trying to talk to Rodney, um, and maybe I heard something, maybe I heard that, um, they, um, are close to a decision, and he was looking to try to start the process with the town before the appeal period ran with the, the Cape Cod Commission or something like that. He was trying to sort of jumpstart it ahead of normal.
That's what he said in design review, when he was in front
That's what he said, yeah, okay. So, yeah, so you may be seeing that sooner rather than later.
Okay, yeah, cause that will be a series of public hearings.
And that's one where you, you accepted the application, and all the plans are in piles on top of file cabinets in that area that, in the meeting room there that, uh, I'm next to till Friday, but, um, you know, I've never even looked at them since it hasn't come up to the commission, I mean, the board, so, um
Well, now we know where they are.
There's stuff, yeah, there's
Don't forget what he said.
Stuff there on top of file cabinets, you know, that came from on top of file cabinets downstairs.
We should thank Tom for coming out of retirement and helping us these past months, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And I don't know if he'll ever see me at a planning board meeting again, but, I mean, there's a chance I may be at the one on the fifteenth, cause I'll be
If he, if
Rodney wants me to spend about a week helping the guy out.
The new town planner's not confirmed.
What's that?
He'd be here on the fifteenth if the new town planner is not confirmed.
I heard he's starting first of January or whatever, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if he's been through the selectmen, but, uh
I know people worked on the first of January.
Yeah, we don't work, we canceled our meeting.
All right.
I make a motion for a adjournment.
All favor say aye.